I, motion carries unanimously. Great, how would you walk us through the course of this?
We received an email and some associated documents from the property owner of 161 West Main Street. And he's listed under old business. Hopefully he'll be here to discuss. His activities on universal access to the lower level of 161 West Main Street. We received a letter regarding the definitive plan revisions that the board received. A letter from William Spargis and we received a letter from Man and Man regarding the traffic consultant response. As well as Traffic Engineers Response Letter Number Three, those can be brought up during the public hearing. And then the fifth item is a response letter from Gale Associates. And that's also to be brought up during the public hearing.
Great, why don't we deal with the vouchers? Someone would be able to submit a motion to pay the vouchers?
Is there a total number somewhere?
A hundred and seven dollars and seven cents.
Alright, I'll like to make a motion to approve the vouchers. In a total amount of a hundred and seven dollars and seven cents.
Is there a second?
Give me one second.
I second.
Uh, why don't we discuss? Everything look copacetic? I had a quick question for Howard.
This is two else, I believe. Check it out.
Howard, I had a quick question. This seems to be a FedEx?
Yeah, the FedEx, I'm looking at it right now, the FedEx should actually be thirty four fifty five.
Right, that second one isn't ours.
They combined it unfortunately, and I thought I had separated it.
Good catch, Howard.
Even a blind scroll trip's over not every now and then, right?
Can we both approve the amended amount?
Absolutely, why don't you with, Rob, you want to withdraw that?
Sure, withdraw, withdraw previous motion, please. What's the, what would be the new number, please?
You know what, I'm trying to figure that out.
Is there a math major in the house?
Subtract thirty four oh five or thirty five fifty five?
So we have one oh seven, oh seven?
Seventy three dollars and two cents.
How much is the FedEx?
Thirty four fifty five.
Alright, so I will. I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers in a total amount of seventy three dollars and two cents. A second?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously? Couple one of fast and we'll get it over you.
We're expecting Larry Graham at seven fifteen.
You want to do the old business?
I don't think we can do the old business. If I'm looking around, right, I don't think the. So, I think the prudent thing to do at this point would be to recess, or recess. Have a little break, let's go have a coffee break. The coffee shop of your choice. And we're going to take a little five minute recess until hopefully other board members show up.
Is Tilly around?
And we're going to take a five minute recess. They obviously have the sound up. Hi, everybody, we've completed our five minute recess. During the interim, let the record show that Tim Howard arrives. Seven twenty two, seven twenty, something like that. And now that we have a quorum plus one, we can reopen the public hearing for Turning Leaf. A continuation of the public hearing.
My folder has some wear.
It's getting a little tattered.
Good evening, Jill Mann, here on behalf of Artisan Development, the applicant in connection with the subdivision known as Turning Leaf. What I did, just because I thought it would be nice to have something that just had all of the issues in one page, was I summarized the issues that we had, I guess, list of issues that the board had created at its last meeting. And then I have, if you will, responses next to it, just a list of what we had identified from before. In addition to that, I cannot remember, I was quick to tell you if I'd given it to you before or not, but I created a list of the waivers that are being requested accompanied by the mitigation measures.
Yeah, you.
I updated it because what part of it is, is remember how we had gone through the traffic report? And there was a couple of additional things that Mr. Graham had asked for? I updated the mitigation to actually include that. Because since that time, Mr. Graham and Dan Mills had had additional conversations and had, I mean, Larry can talk about it when he comes in, but they had signed off on the traffic. That being the construction, which we had sent over via email, the final construction plan or access path.
The truck route?
Yes, the new truck route, so we'd sent that by email. Oh, you didn't get, it was on the twentieth that got sent to you, emailed.
I may have it here.
And we provided a new truck route, not a new truck route, the truck route that you had asked for. And that Larry had said, perfect. So that was one, the final, then the other traffic measure, which I had indicated on the list of issues, was with regard to the three way stop with Cyril, Lisa, and then, was that Marlboro coming in, right? Seal, Teddy, where's the three way stop?
Marlboro and Teddy.
There's three though, with Marv, no, remember the three way stop?
Cyril, Lisa.
White Pines, thank you. And originally Larry had said maybe we should make it a three way stop.
Yeah.
But there was many conversations and Dan felt strongly that that would be a bad idea. And what they had discussed and agreed upon was actually to place a truck crossing ahead sign, so that people who would be accessing into that, into that area would understand, okay, there's going to be traffic. Exactly, so there would be a temporary measure installed. One of the other things that this board had actually asked us to address, and I'll address this to you, Mr. Howard, because you had asked for it, was if we would consider testing for arsenic. Now, I know the board recognized, and I think you even had said, look, we know it's not a requirement, we know it's not a law, but we detest. And I do have those test results, which basically say there's no reportable level. So, I will give that to you.
So you did test, right?
Yeah, you asked us to, so we did.
And they said the tests were relatively inexpensive.
It was, we were more than willing to do it, and I think we'd even indicated that to you. You know, we don't have an issue telling you, it's a site where it's all natural and I couldn't imagine there being really any sort of an impact, and that was confirmed by an LSP. Okay.
Yeah, exhibit number three.
Exhibit three?
And in addition to that, here, we're going to keep going. You had asked us to ensure that the lighting department, as well as Mr. Williams, included on the plan, the lighting plan. And we have done that, and that was included in the distribution that came to you on May twentieth. So we have that lighting plan as approved by your lighting department.
That's on the plan.
It most certainly is. And then, we're just going to keep going, we did. Oh, yeah, please.
At some point, I'd like to get back to that, and I know what you did at it, and I've got a, I don't know, mini sized plan, so I really didn't know. It was really difficult for me to look and find them all.
I know, it is, it's because of that, it's because of that sheet. I've got them highlighted on my, on my plan here.
I'd love to get back to that at some point, just to see it.
Okay, I'll take you through, I'll take you through the plan changes once.
Yeah, Jill's on her walls, let her know.
Wind it up again.
I could talk forever.
Warning.
Yeah, yeah, Miss Will Rogers, right? So, one of the other things that I believe Mr. Cattilia, look, Cattilia asked us to do, was to attempt to create connectivity with regard to parcel F, so that we kind of, if you will, I don't know how, hug the entire parcel. And we did do that, so we extended parcel F, created a hundred foot corridor coming up and did that. When we did that, obviously it impacted the scope of the project, and you will note that it did reduce the scope of the project. But also by doing so, we were able to actually decrease the length of those two cul-de-sacs. So at the present time, Grapevine has no waiver required, and then Vineyard requires a fifty five foot waiver.
So, what is, remind me there, that's eight hundred foot?
Eight hundred and fifty five is Vineyard.
Right, eight hundred is the low limit, so we're actually, we'd only be waiving about a fifty five foot waiver.
Exactly, exactly.
Length of road limitation.
Yes, and I did indicate that on the list of waivers to make sure we had a compiled list, so that you'd have everything in one spot instead of having to look at all the plans.
This is good because we're going to need a new cover sheet. And the waivers that are requested have to be on a cover sheet.
That's right.
In there.
Great.
But I just thought, you know, this way it's in front of you, instead of having to access a plan that can be a big sheater, having to have Howard pull it up. I just thought, you know, better to have everything in front of you and accessible. So that's what we're requesting there. In addition to that, we do show the access, we show a walking path now that will access the open space parcel.
Is that twenty foot wide gravel path, or?
It's actually not twenty foot wide gravel path, because that'd be awfully large, but we do have a twenty foot wide easement with an eight, I think it's eight gravel, gravel path?
Eight or four?
Oh, eight, eight. So it goes down, it's nice, it's meandering, and it's, I think Howard's showing you.
It's this.
Oh, it's four foot wide, I'm sorry, it's four foot wide gravel path.
Oh, I thought, okay.
It's hard to see the gravel path i- in there, but it is, it's this dashed line.
There you go.
And that's, that's an easement that runs, well, am I looking at?
Yeah, it goes from the parking spaces.
Oh, you got a pointer.
We did, we finally did, and it's great that I have an opportunity to use it.
There's two of them.
Could I see up here a little bit, Howard? So these are the parking spaces.
Exactly, we also addressed that concern that we did not create a big right of way, but rather put those right on the street so that we wouldn't disincent people from using them, but rather almost created an incentive to, because it's, you know, up in the pub, they won't feel like they're going in somebody's yard.
Right.
Is it signed?
Pardon me?
Is it signed?
Richie, did you sign that yet? Did you put a sign up? I don't remember if we did.
We were going to put a sign.
We are, but I don't think we noted on the plan, but we didn't.
Is there room there to put an HP spot?
You could, but that is not a handicap accessible path.
Right, it's a gravel path.
It's not handicap accessible. They, you know, there's no, the route out there is not handicap accessible.
Well, the sidewalk will be done.
The sidewalk is.
It's maybe similar to what is at a beach, where you provide the spaces and then you have the special type of wheelchairs or something to go down the path.
Yeah, there's no, there's no requirement for that.
Is the topography very, very rough along the four foot wide gravel path?
It's, it doesn't meet ADA standards.
You're asking for it to meet ADA standards, just to be as good as possible.
Yeah, it'll be as good as possible.
Then make your application for the parking. I don't know, how does the board feel about that? Sorry to jump in, let the record show, Larry Graham arrives at seven thirty, took a review, agent in town. Larry, we're, just to bring you up to speed, forgive me, obviously, we're looking at Turning Leaf. Many hours looking at this, we're looking at the, the access, excuse me, to parcel F. This is the easement that is associated with these three parking places. We were just talking about the, the idea of one of them being HP parking, a little bit wider. I was wondering if there'd be the room for that.
Hi, my gut response to that, Harry, is that I'd probably not want to see a handicap parking space there and encourage handicap parking, and then they get there and there's, it's not handicap compliant. I think I'd rather keep it that way.
I mean, it's, it's, it's rough, once you, once you get into the open space parcel, you have to cross an intermittent stream, it's, it's, you know, it's pretty rugged topography.
There'd be no way that that would ever possibly be improved in the future? If the town wanted to.
No one has a crystal ball, Harry.
Like for the boardwalk?
By whatever means. Forrest Payton. Crush and Go.
It's a right of way though.
I guess my, my answer is, with the current regulations, no. With the current regulations, no, you can't, you can't approve it and build a road across there. It's not, it's not, when I say regulations, the, the, the local non-zoning wetlands bylaw would not allow it, it's.
Oh, I'm not referring to a road, I'm talking about improvement of the path, a walking path. And of course, you'd have to go through where it was jurisdictional further down in the open space parcel. You would have to, of course, go in front of Kong Kong, or when you're within a hundred, what is it, a hundred feet of a wetland resource? I understand that. But what I'm saying is, is this run, where are you going from?
Natural terrain. It goes up and down.
The slope, I don't think you can obtain the minimums or the maximums.
That's basically what I'm asking.
I don't, I mean, Richie, can you maintain that?
It looks like from here to here is about.
It would be a huge undertaking.
Yeah.
And that would have to be.
That would have to be like twelve feet apart.
That's a four foot drop, and then it goes up two feet, and then drop is from here.
It drops off, basically, it drops off fairly smoothly.
Can't be done, can't be done. At least I tried.
If the board's satisfied with three spaces there, why not leave? Unless there's an area of room on lot nineteen, why not extend that line that's parallel with the road to the sideline between eighteen and nineteen? And just leave room for an additional space, whether you need it for handicapped or because it becomes very popular. If you extended that, the line across the back of the three spaces to the sideline, you could get two more spaces in, or a handicap, and a.
It's not a problem.
But don't, but don't build it.
But don't build it, just build three spaces.
We'd agree to land banquet, so we'd show the extension, but not the actual spaces for construction purposes. So that way, you know, the town gets the benefit of the ability to construction, so choose to.
Could we zoom in on that a little bit, Howard? Would it be easier to zoom in on that just a little bit? That area? Am I, am I seeing that correctly? If a car were to be parked in one of the spaces and someone were to be walking?
They'd have to walk around.
They'd have to walk out into the street?
Or behind the parking spaces.
Or behind the parking places, off, off the sidewalk.
Is there formal entrance? It looks like.
Am I?
The dotted section would open through here, right?
Yeah.
We can just put the park, the sidewalk around the back of the spaces if you want.
Or would that just be a curb cut that, and you'd move the spaces in a little bit further?
But then you have.
I don't know, I actually know how big the spaces are and how big a car would be if it were parked in there.
I think you're going to be better off having somebody stop than continue across a path that's a sidewalk with spaces in front, so we could cover, go behind with the sidewalk? I think that may make a little bit more safety sense.
Right, and then you could put signage in between the sidewalk.
Yep.
People would know.
And then you could have a curb.
They'd stop, they'd have to stop because of the signage, you know, or something. Everybody good with that? Is that what I got? A good idea? Thank you, excellent.
Okay.
Going to be able to draw that up, Rich?
We'll have it in your next set. In addition to that, we did provide for two stubs to connect to water, so the town has the ability in the future to actually make water connections. And in addition to that, we will convey to the town easements to permit those extensions to be made when and if the town chooses to do so. I think I, I did.
Is one coming off of Vineyard, one coming off of?
One goes off of Vineyard and one goes off of, what's the?
Right there, one's right there.
Right here, and this.
And one is at, at the end of.
Is that that other easement I saw?
No, this is the same easement, but the access easement is where the stub comes in, right, Rich, on the other side?
Is there another one further up?
Yes, on Vineyard. Howard, can you zoom to Vineyard, or?
Well, I'm going to show, I'm going to go through the plan and show you the changes in detail and.
And then the one other, the one other one that Rich is going to talk about too is when we talked about the change in scope, you'll notice that we alleviated the lot irregularities that were pointed out by you and Ms. Evangelista at the last hearing as well. And the final thing that I'd like to actually discuss very briefly with this board is the inclusionary housing bylaw. Last, I think it was last week, we met with the housing trust and to discuss, you know, basically your master plan with regard to housing, the fact that you're about eleven point six, they're trying to maintain, they really need housing stock. What's the best way to do that? What's the most desirable type of housing and how can we provide it? Is there a way to do it better for the town? And we were exploring a bunch of different options, you know, do we put, do we put a single unit here? Is that what's best for the town? Is it best if we were to try to expand upon property already, if you will, kind of owned by the town, you know, in due to the trustal? And see if we could actually build something that could be owned by the town and then rented by them? Because there was an indication by, oh my gosh.
Paul Nelson, of the task force and the trust.
That, that the best solution for the town's demands would be rental property, not single homeownership. So we just talked about that a little bit, and we're still exploring the options, but I did want to make sure that I presented that to the board, because they may make a recommendation, but you are the board that makes the decision with regard to how that is executed. So we wanted to talk.
Just to add to that, Jill, the desires of the trust are based upon the housing production plan that was approved by the municipality in 2011. And out of that, one of the big ideas is the creation of affordable rental units. So it just wasn't our, a simple opinion of a trust or a task force member, it was based upon an approved plan.
So I just, I don't know, when the, you know, when you would like to discuss something like that, if you want Rich really to go through the plan. if you want Rich really to go through the plan first, but I did wanna bring that to you and to see if the board had any suggestions, any, you know, any directions. If you would prefer to wait until we have our next meeting, um, with the Task Force, which we plan on doing, um, after this hearing, because I wanted to talk more with Diane, who's the head of the, um, Housing...
The Board.
Yes.
I think I'd be more inclined to go with what their suggestion is, that's what they're tasked with.
Right, and I appreciate, I just wanted...
Unless we have some overbearing reason that that wouldn't work.
Right.
But, I mean, essentially, that's what it's established for.
Right, and there were a couple of different ideas, because they have money in their fund that they can't spend. So, you know, we obviously said, look, do you want us to give you money? And their, their opinion was, we don't need money, we need units. And we're not in the business of developing and cultivating and, and creating units. We need you to do that. So, you know, Tom was kind of, okay, look, we, we can do a few different things, and that's what we're investigating and wanna present to them a better and more detailed plan once we got that general concept of what they're really looking for, which are rental units.
Is there land enough on Jewett Street or Tressel Way to build additional?
Well, it looks like it, but I don't know if there is. Because it may be that it's too, it's wet. Do you know?
Tressel Way would probably be wet, Jewett might be okay.
But we're, we're exploring all options. It's possible, it's possible even to, you know, try and see if there's some money available to acquire, to develop. I mean, there's a lot of different things that we were talking about with them, and they were very, very receptive to it.
I can tell you, they, they do have some money, because, well, Howard can attest to it, uh...
They do have money, they're just not, not an entity that's ready to move forward and accept cash and then develop. They'd much rather...
Us do that for them.
Right, partner up with and, and help guide the development.
And Tom was more than...
Over the last few years, at least, uh, well, since CPA money, they've, they've received over about a half a million dollars between the planning board monies, the Yenmu payments, and the CPA.
So that, I guess...
Sounds good enough to give them a lot of money.
And I think Tom's willing to provide some expertise to hopefully help and create some, um, affordable units in this community. You know, in connection with their desires.
I'll be honest, I'm almost leaning towards just building them here for families.
It's very difficult to get, the reason why they were, I think the reason why that is, is a wonderful desire. In effect, it doesn't work that well because it is very, very, as a person who tries to sell them all the time, it is very difficult for families to get qualified for mortgages. Which is why in a rental market, if they can get a nice place to live, they get to pay. They don't have to meet asset requirements, they don't have to meet, um, cash flow requirements. I think it's, it's something around $80,000 is the amount of money you can have in an account. And then you have to generate sufficient cash flow to be able to pay for everything from, um, you know, the, the mortgage bank's perspective. And, and my experience, it's very, very difficult to qualify.
Maybe that's where the Housing Trust could come in, they could help us first time buy.
They usually...
But, but we can talk about it later, let's...
It's a lot of issues, but that's why I just wanted to put it before the board and let them know what we were thinking, because we are thinking rentals and helping them out and doing what they would like. So I think I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Rich, to go over the plans.
So as Jill said, uh, we amended the plan to...
Could, could you turn the plan this way? I, I know they, but this is for us, and, so, the audience will have to move if they wanna see.
Okay, we, we amended the plan to increase, uh, the size of the open space parcel and include, included in that, uh, this strip that, uh, goes out to the abutting parcel. And our prior plan, it ended here, so this has been added. So now the, the parcel F is, is the parcel that's outlined in green on this plan. We added streetlights and, uh, went, uh, back and forth with the, with the lighting department, recognizing that in the final design, they could move a little bit. But there's an existing streetlight at the end of Lisa Lane. We're proposing a streetlight here at the corner of Vineyard and Lisa. Uh, one between the intersection of Vineyard and Lisa and Grapevine and Vineyard. One at the corner of Grapevine. One in the circle or adjacent to the circle. And then one adjacent to the circle in Vineyard. And then moving out towards Searl. One here, 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 and out at the intersection.
What's that rough on center spacing?
Uh, it's about 250 feet, which is about standard for, um, the lighting that they use.
That's fine.
And if you drive through any of the more recent subdivisions, I mean, they're not, there's not a lot of light. It's, it's, enough to light the street as you go.
I noticed you have it where most of the turns are and the intersections, and that's important, but...
Yeah. We added a bus stop on the... We put it on this side so that as the bus is coming in, um, it'll be on the, on the right side of the street. We, as Jill said, we added locations for possible utility connections. Water in particular, we extended, uh, the water main that was in Vineyard out and closed the stub outside the circle. And then if, um, that were ever developed or a water line loop became available, they could extend it out here. And the same goes for, uh, the easement where the walking path is. If there were ever a need to, um, extend the water down here, they'd have the ability to do that.
And the main is stubbed for that?
The main is stubbed off the road. Creating this, this strip, the circles got pulled back. And, uh, between lots six and 12, we reduced one lot, spread them out. And not that it's this board's, you know, first focus, but, uh, most of the work was pulled out of the, uh, the buffer zone for the Concombs jurisdiction. So that, you know, helps in the overall picture. And one thing that, that, um, your report hasn't seen yet, but will be on the, um, the next set of plans, is that we had this storm auto management area, uh, which was over here. And we've proposed, because of some of the, the, um, the back and forth that we've had with the Conservation Commission and the fact that there's a round pool over here, we've, uh, proposed to pipe that, instead of going here, just continuing, uh, and go into this pond. This pond is expanded, um, slightly to accommodate that. There is no, no change in the, um, the overall flow to the wetland system. However, this no longer will exist, that, that outlet. And we'll, we'll pipe it under the road. There is a, you know, somewhat of a cut, this is a high point in the road. That's the way we didn't do it before, but, um, in order to, uh, to get by this issue with the Conservation Commission, we did that. And I think that's it.
Rich, could I ask you, and, uh, I, I think we're gonna need to zoom in on that. On that area you were talking about there, Howard, if you...
Right, yeah?
Yeah, if you could, I was, I was trying to look there and maybe, maybe it was just a part of the old plan or something. I, I was looking at the sidewalk, again, the sidewalk, and it looked as though there was a narrowing of the sidewalk that occurred.
The sidewalk doesn't narrow, although we pull it away from the wetland and towards the road. So, in order, and we've asked for waiver on that, on that cross-section. In order to, um, to be outside the, the Concombs, you know, no, no impervious area, which is 75 feet, we pulled that construction in this direction. And it, and it appears that the, the sidewalk in your normal cross-section has a grass plot and is separated from the road. We've pulled it up against the road, posed vertical granite curving in that location so that, uh, we can comply with their, um, their wetland bylaw.
And this is all vertical granite curving throughout?
Just in that location.
Just in that one location, you need that?
The rest, the rest of the site is slope granite.
You need that to capture?
Sorry, kick cut.
You need that to capture, right?
Yes. Well, we need it, it's pedestrian safety, yeah.
Understood. So you'll ramp up? Is that the energy? You'll ramp it up here and then carry it back here?
Yeah, there's really no ramping, it's, the, the, the grade of the sidewalk is about the grade of the top of the curb, so...
But this is all being moved away.
Yeah.
That's correct.
What?
I'm just trying to picture how we're going from the slope granite to the vertical.
Oh, yeah, there'll be a transition piece in there.
This is a design detail, it's, it's real minor. Where the sidewalk starts to come into the curb and the road, you know how it forms that sliver of landscape? You can't maintain them, and...
Yeah.
So if you can create a 90 at some point...
You create a 90 where it gets to be less than like a foot and a half. That's it, that's, you know, in a nutshell, that's what it is. We're gonna produce, um, a full set of drawings that have all these changes in them.
And the amended waivers?
The amended waivers, yes.
And, I'd like to look to Larry because...
I, I looked at, uh, the, you know, the eight items on the letter and, and the topographical sheets that were revised. They don't have any particular issues. I don't, I didn't hear Rich, and maybe I missed it coming in a little bit later. Uh, the Grapevine Circle is designed to lane standards.
Correct.
And I don't know if the board has discussed that or not, but they did call me and ask my opinion, and I said, I think you, I think you could, I think it's doable under the regulations, so, because of length, so...
So it'll be actually Grapevine Lane?
No, you don't have to change, it, it can be named anything, but, um, it's a lane, you know, per definition of the, uh... It's like you don't have to name Lisa Lane, Lisa Street, because it's a street under there.
Right.
But it's a reduced, reduced payment. So they were already reduced from 26 to 24, uh, as a waiver, and now this is 18?
No, it's not, I think it's, I think it's 20.
20, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's great.
Yeah, I think it's 20.
And the, uh, the reduction in the length of Vineyard, uh, Lane by approximately 75 feet then leaves you with a length of, so, you still need the waiver, but it's...
Still need the waiver, but it's, it's about, you know, to the throat of the, of the, um, the circle, it's about a 55-foot, um, waiver, it's 55, 855 feet.
Can I add to that? If Vineyard Lane is to be granted waivers having to do with reduction from subdivision standards to lane standards? Is that...
It's Grapevine, I got you wrong.
Grapevine, ra- rather. With, with that, there's an ability to, to not provide the cul-de-sac? Because the, the, the design standards for a lane, correct me if I'm wrong, but they provide for other termination besides that, that bulb, whether it be a...
Yeah, you could have a T-type turnaround.
T or things like that, is, is that at all to be considered for reduc, reduction in impervious services?
I wouldn't think you'd want that for value, so...
Well, we'd rather have the circle in, in it, we, we need a certain amount of frontage in, in order to, to provide the frontage.
Well, the law frontage can still be there, it's just the road construction can be...
I think it's your money houses and you'd want a circle, but, well, it's, it's just...
We'd prefer to have the circle.
Well, I...
I mean, for, for plowing and, 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 uh, you know, the general circulation with circles, but I mean, I've done T-turnarounds, but I much prefer the circle.
I, I think, I, I think that they both are legitimate. I, I think the, um, I think I've already mentioned that the idea that these are all paved is, is really a short-sighted, um, response to maintenance. And, um, the idea of using the center of these pieces, uh, for a long-term, you know, 20, 30, 40 years down the road for vegetation, um, far outweighs, uh, snow removal in the immediate, um, in the immediacy of it, of that approach. So, I, I don't, I'm not in favor of large paved, simple cul-de-sacs like that. That's, that's going backwards in subdivision design. That's not moving forward with low-impact development. That's a pretty old way of doing it. So since they are proposing that, you know, the idea of a T, a hammerhead, um, uh, I would argue, Harry, that actually, um, some very high-end residential homes that we've worked on prefer not to be associated with a subdivision look and that the idea of a driveway and a hammerhead, um, where it becomes more private, feeling of privacy, is actually a higher sale than, than your typical, um, large paved cul-de-sac.
Right.
But it's, it's their call, uh, in that regard. I, I'm not, I, I'm not in favor of the waiver of the whole thing being paved, but that's another discussion. So I, I think a hammerhead's a great idea, but it's there, it's up to them.
I, I know the DPW sometimes has issues with a landscape center island when the town accepts the street with them having to maintain that center island to the same standards as the residences around it, but that's certainly, I can...
It, it's, it's an issue, and it's an issue that the town needs to address in terms of maintaining that. But, you know, there's a way to do that. The way to do it is not to just simply pave it over and not deal with it. There is a solution.
Maybe, um, part of that solution is, um, this year, this summer, hopefully, we can, and this has nothing to do with the subdivision, but we can look at the subdivision rules and regulations, and then make some modifications to it.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Perhaps that's one of the areas that we could address in conjunction with the Highway Department that has to plow it. And, uh, by working together, we can find, uh, something that moves a little more towards LID practices. And, uh, that might be the way to go, just, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea, Harry.
Larry?
Nothing else.
Nothing else? I, I know there was a mention made of, um, the stop sign and Searl and Lisa and White Pine?
Yeah, there was a, uh, I had a discussion today with Dan Mills. They're a traffic consultant from MVM Transportation. And, uh, I, I had suggested a stop sign on Searl Street at the intersection with White Pine Drive. Not, uh, to slow traffic as they thought, or to, um, have, have a stop sign there because it was warranted because of, of the number of vehicles using Searl Street. But primarily to, uh, warn persons on Searl Street that this was going to become, at least for the, uh, construction period of, of the subdivision, traveled by some heavy equipment. So in our discussion today, we arrived at a mutual agreement to, and I don't know if you've seen this, uh, that was forwarded, to place a truck crossing a head sign on Searl Street about 150 feet back from the intersection. No stop sign. So that warns the people on Searl Street that, who have the right of way to go through, that, uh, there is something else going on there besides residential operations. And I think that would obviously be taken away when the construction was completed, so...
Thank you, Larry. Is this exhibit four?
I'm happy with that.
Yes. Want a back one?
I got one right here.
I have more if you need them.
Otherwise, in their previous letter, they, they agreed to put stop signs and stop lines throughout the immediate neighborhood there on, uh, Searl, Marlboro, Woodland Ledge, all the other streets.
Just wanna make, make certain that everybody in, including the Highway Department knows that this is temporary, only during construction. And what, that's sitting there, drag down, five years from now, we still see that there. Take it down when you're done.
I also saw an email, although I don't think I have a copy of it, that suggested that, uh, the developer was, uh, agreeable to post signage, whether it be enforceable or not, for trucking speed limits and, uh, throughout the neighborhood there on the neighborhood streets as they had done in Raleigh, which was extremely effective. I saw that in an email, so that should be wrapped into any conditions that have an approval.
We do, we did actually agree to that, and I thought, I included that in my email with that letter showing the, the truck routes as you had asked.
Okay.
I'll look for it.
Yep.
And those would be temporary?
Yes.
And did you have to go through any type of state or municipal regulatory review? And did you have to go through any type of state or municipal regulatory review?
No, the police department was involved with it and put their blessing on it. I don't know if, I don't know if it was ever enforced or tried to be enforced by the police department, but I can say from my experience with the developer that they enforced it. They told their drivers and their operators that this is what you better be doing, because if you're not, you're not gonna be on the job. So I think that was probably more effective than handing out a ticket.
Got their attention, yes.
Yeah.
The only point that, that comes to my mind right now is there was some discussion, and I'm not exactly certain how we left it. There was a discussion of where, where off-site, where Marlboro and Tenny come together. There was some kind of a plan or a set of options to improve the site distance there, and that is a pretty rough corner.
You're talking about the one where there's, where we had proposed to create forty feet of additional site distance? And that actually is on your, your, I'm gonna give this to Larry if you don't mind. I just, I did actually include that on the mitigation and that wasn't, excuse me, one of the letters to, between, oh, I think I gave you an old, whatever. To and from Larry and, and Dan, and I did include that in the mitigation, which would mean we would go in, the town owns a certain amount. We'll cut into the bank, which, again, Larry can talk about, we'll cut into the bank. We created an additional forty feet of site distance and we're willing to undertake that work and that's at Marlboro and Tenny. And we've already actually gone out. Rich has, you actually served, you went out and looked at it. And that's, I think, how we got, got the information to Larry.
Right.
Hasn't that already been cut back?
Oh, no. You might have cut.
There is some room. Well, it was cut back in order to do the road and I'm not sure, I'm sure that road has moved, moved over time, but there is some room between the property line and the edge of the traveled way to make some improvements so that you can increase the site distance.
You require us cutting into the embankment, though.
I think, Larry, you hadn't had a chance to actually look at it at the last meeting, but.
Yeah.
Thoughts?
Well, again, we could, we could ask them to do a plan to show that grading and the stabilization of the slope thereafter. That's probably the best way to do it, as opposed to just putting it in as a condition. If we can at least have a plan, that's, that's what we're attempting to do. That might get changed in the field, but I think it should be of record on a plan. That's number eleven on that list.
Does that sound acceptable to the applicant?
We'll prepare a plan and we'll show you how well stabilized, okay? It's not gonna be part of this. It'll be a sketch plan.
I'm not, I'm not sure the order of what you're doing here. If they, you're gonna go to the public or you want us to keep going or?
I, I want to keep going just because we probably have the most pointed to the plant and then looking for the general.
Okay. On this, just, so there's this email from Julie Nally and have they received a copy of this? You have her email, okay. So the soil testing, that was great. We're, just curious, how many test samples did you take?
Three.
Three? From all different spots?
It's actually.
That's, that's great. That's great. Lot twenty-two in her email considering, consideration to flip house and it's a privacy issue. You may not have read this yet, had a chance to read this yet.
You just didn't have a chance to react.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Can we see lot?
It, it's upright here and, and I know that the developer and this member of the, this butter have been in discussion.
What I was, what I was gonna, what I was gonna suggest as.
Lot twenty-two's around the corner, I think.
Well, it used to be twenty-two.
Oh, but you've truncated it, right?
There have been a couple of lots removed from the plant. So that used to be lot twenty-two? And we've provided a no-cut adjacent to that lot that runs from, from the street all the way back. And it's twenty-five feet. I did not, I, and we've had conversations with her about flipping that house. It's a very difficult thing to do and commit to. It could happen if you had someone special come in and say they wanted to have the driveway on the right-hand side, but I think most, most customers are gonna get the driveway on the left in some fashion like that. So I don't, I don't think we can commit to flipping the house.
Can, can, can you provide them with an evergreen tree buffer or is it already heavily vegetated?
I remember.
This is a, this is the twenty-five foot no-cut.
And is that all heavily vegetated?
There's not a lot of undergrowth in it because a lot of it's mature. I don't remember exactly right here, but there, there is some great variation in grade. There's a stone wall through here and.
If you.
But.
If you walk, if you walk with the owner, I'm, I'm.
We have. That's why we were a little surprised.
But if, if you walk with her, you, you can identify the areas that she has visual concerns. And if it's an understory plant, because it's all covered with trees, you find an understory plant that's gonna grow healthy, native, evergreen. And then if it's open, you propose an evergreen tree of some sort to provide that buffer that she's looking for.
Yeah, well, we actually met Julie out of the site and kinda walked the whole property with her.
Mr. O'Connell?
Sorry, Tom O'Connell, the applicant. And we significantly, significantly increased the no-cut zone for Julie along the whole edge of property, almost along the edge of driveway. Twenty-five feet all the way down into the back. And then when they hit the stone wall, they agreed to even follow the, the stone wall and we gave her some additional no-cut over here. So I told her that I really couldn't commit to switching the driveway at this time. Although, you know, if, if we didn't end up doing a spec house, I would make every best effort to move it to the other side. As I said with, to the gross lines earlier, that I would try to move it to the other side, but I couldn't make any commitments at this time.
There, there, there's another option available to you if, if it's workable with her so that you don't have to flip your driveway is to, the biggest bang for the buffering buck is getting the plant material as close to her as possible. So sometimes with an agreement, you can plant a few evergreen trees on their property. Again, that's an all, you know, that's, that's short money to get your driveway to stay where it is if you want. But I just wanted to make sure that those items had been talked about.
Perhaps, perhaps you could clarify something for me. If that house were flipped and the driveway were on the opposite side, wouldn't the house have to be closer to the Nally property?
Yes.
Well, I looked at this and I, I thought that if the house had to be flipped with the driveway, it would, it wouldn't have the ability to be at the same living level. It would have to be a drive-in to the basement and then walk up to the, the living level. And I think that would make this house unique to the whole neighborhood, wouldn't it? Everything in this is being proposed as drive-in at the living level as opposed to drive-under.
Drive-under, yeah.
Then on the. So I, I think we've beaten that one pretty good. The, I see you have a tree symbol for the planting plan. Is that right? So can you add to that a plant list that will, you know, specify the size and the quality and the, the detail of the plant, of the tree going into those street trees? Because right now I think it's just a legend that just says a tree. So a plant list for that and a detail for that.
Rob, do you have recommendations on a, on a proper street tree?
Um, I, I'm gonna stay out of that, you know, that, they, they, they need to have someone qualified do that, you know, and if it's a qualified person, they'll pick the right street tree.
Well, we've, we've planted street trees elsewhere in town and have picked a mix. It's really not a good idea to have one, one species. It needs to be a mix and sometimes it changes based on availability. But we can definitely provide the detail and actually I think the detail is on, on the plan.
It could have been. I didn't see it, but it could have been.
I've told you in the past, though, when we've worked with this developer, when this developer actually worked for the town, cleaning up a couple of messes that there were some extra trees and they actually ended up at one of the schools, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
And then there's obviously a guarantee that is associated with the plants and that, a note that is, and I, this is just one planning board member, but in replacing dead trees or dying trees after a year, within that one-year window, there needs to be a note that requires the tree is replaced, you know, the next spring or fall, whichever comes first. So that would be a note that would wanna be on the drawings.
Can you essentially match the caliper of the existing?
Yeah, you, yeah, you'd replace, in one year, it's not gonna change any in size. You'd just replace the tree that is dead or dying. The other is that I think, so some of the trees are shown on the individual lots and so you're gonna need some sort of a, of a planting easement.
We have that.
All set? Great. And then I couldn't see it in the small scales, but now that the light poles are on there, just make sure that the poles and the trees are coordinated and if there's any that come in conflict with each other with the crown of the tree, that you can move the trees and, and fine-tune that so that they don't have to remove things later. Curious, maybe I'm reading the plan wrong. On sheet two or five, Vineyard Lane and Grapevine Circle. What? So when I, yeah. So this is the right-of-way? Am I correct reading that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the right-of-way around the pavement. And here's the pavement here. And is this the right-of-way here?
It is.
So why, just curious, why is this right-of-way so large and this right-of-way?
Oh, because one's a lane.
Okay.
Because it only accesses less than five houses and any others.
Got it, got it. And the reason I said, I noticed that were these trees were outside of that. Okay. I know that with regards to construction and veh- vehicle and scheduling, it's gonna be important to coordinate the construction vehicle schedule with school buses. And when the children are picked up and dropped off, and I'm not sure what the solution is to that, but I know with Penbrook, it was a huge issue, you know, with the construction of Penbrook and when they could bring the, the buses came and when the construction vehicles could come and that sort of thing. And so.
And, and I understand that, but that's a different, we're not, this is not a school, so it's, it's a little different. There are bus stops. And I guess my, my comment on it is there are construction vehicles that go through the town during, during bus pickup and drop-off all day long. So, I mean, people need to be aware of it. I think to, to say that you can't have truck traffic when there's a school bus out there is gonna be a tough thing to to deal with. And I, you know, that's why the speed limit signs and the construction routes are important.
I, I agree with what you just said. I guess, and maybe Larry feels more comfortable with it than I do, but that that issue is addressed to the best of our ability to, you know, protect the children who, you know, get off a bus.
Well, I, I basically agree with Rich that you can't regulate the truck traffic around the school buses. You can't say for a certain hour, afternoon and morning, that you can't be coming in and out of there. And with all the signage and the routing and everything that is being talked about and promised here, I think we have approached that.
Is there any, is there any, is there any potential to talk with the school committee and to, in the school district and just find out if, I don't know if there's a bus stop, that if they just moved it for the construction over to another street for a year, or is that a whole can of worms that's not?
Well, prior to the startup of, of the subdivision, when we have a pre-construction conference, you could certainly invite the, whoever runs the school buses and our person from the district and, you know, have them involved with the pre-construction conference. They know where, where the traffic is.
Can I just add something very, very practical and maybe I'm, I've got too much field experience for this, but I would, I would beg you to say that the very first eight trucks were running, the school buses were running, that the contractor's gonna know very, very well when it's behind a school bus with the lights blinking.
Oh, yeah.
And the contractor is most likely going to coordinate around them so as not to disturb the routes of their trucking. I, I think this is a problem. It doesn't need a solution. It's, the contractor can make money instead of finding somebody to do it and run it alternate time.
You may be right, but I don't wanna take that chance. And I wanna make sure that as one member, as one member, that, that we have done as a board the very best that we can do with this project in a reasonable way to make sure that we have protected the children to the best of our ability. And I, and, and that's not saying that you stop all construction traffic. I'm not asking for that. I'm just, you know, Larry's saying he's taught, he's, he's, he's feeling comfortable with it and I, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's important to ask him to keep out, out in front. So, okay, so that was the school bus. So I think the notification to the school committee is a good idea. I'm not sure how or who does that, Howard?
I can talk to.
Just pre-construction meeting to just advise him.
Right.
It should be a condition that, that they be invited to the pre-construction meeting.
I think that's, that's a great step. That's a great step. The limit of work line that you have going around the buffer, it's like, I think it's called a limit of work line. Can that also be called a no disturbance line? The reason I'm saying that is.
In some cases it is, yeah. In some cases it may not be.
And that, 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 what I'm interested in, I guess, is that there's no disturbance of the vegetation that's in there.
And that's our intention. However, as, we had a long discussion about this at a prior meeting. There may be cases where a house is built opposite, like the driveway comes in on the other side or it's moved to another part of the lot and other parts, you know, there's a change in the disturbance line so that trees are saved on the other side of the lot. So it's a little bit of a moving target. This is our best snapshot now. We have all of the lots that are adjacent to the wetland system, which there are a fair amount, are all gonna be, we're gonna have limits of work and we're gonna be putting no disturbed markers along those that we're gonna be really set to. But the interior ones, there are some that, depending on where the septic in the house lie, they're a bit of a moving target, but, but it's our first intention.
So on the interior lots, that's not my concern. It's the exterior of the, where the existing homes sit, that those zones of vegetation would not be disturbed. And I thought that I saw on, and again, I was looking at the reduced plans. I'm not positive, but it, it looked like it was the work limit line graphic. And that is not necessarily the same thing as a do not disturb or a, you know, no grading line. So.
Well, they're all at the edge of the grading and, and there is no, the limit of disturbances.
So if they are, can we also call it no disturbance line?
If you call it the limit of work line, sure.
Not limit of work line, no disturbance also? Can you call it that?
I think we can do that in some spots, right?
In some spots you can, but what you're doing then is, you mean imposing a permanent restriction on somebody's private home so that they can't touch that area in the future?
Yeah, yeah, but that, that's a, that's a buffer.
I don't think we can do it in some instances. Some instances we definitely can and provide it.
The whole point was a buffer.
Well, you have that on, on busing way against those homes there. This, this is a no disturb.
That's a no disturbs?
This is a limit of work line. So this is in addition to.
Could you, like, help Howard show us on the big screen so we can?
It's one, two, and four are a good example.
There, this is the, this is the previously discussed twenty-five foot.
That's, that's an easement. Did we have an easement up against the Nally property?
Okay, now that's a different, oh, just my own quick question. So that's a different graphic symbol.
This is the no disturb and this is.
That's no disturb.
That's a limit of work.
That's a limit of work. And then what happens when they go up there to the top? That section there.
This is the no disturb.
It's just a no disturb because of.
And then the, the limit of work or, or goes right along that no. And then, the, the limit of work, or, or goes right along that no disturb.
So, it's both?
It's both right here.
Well, so, can it, if, if the graphic doesn't, isn't clear, can it be labeled that way?
It's labeled on the definitive plans as a no disturb easement. So, it's no cut, it's labeled on the plans. But you, you...
Okay.
We're going to produce a final set of plans that, and it's on the prior set.
Yeah.
I just, I sent these five topo sheets around to show the changes. On our prior plans, it's, it's labeled
Okay.
clearly as a no cut.
Okay.
An easement.
That's, that's, that's all I was looking for in that.
And we're going to get a full set of plans, right? At the next continuation.
Are we going to go over the waiver?
I'd feel more comfortable going over the waivers with the full board.
Okay.
The, the board that can vote.
All right. I guess I'd like to share with them, just to give them my information. It's not a vote or anything, but so they know.
It'll be the next, it'll be the next.
Yeah, but to try to get them as much information as possible, so that they just know, so that we don't... On waivers one, no, you're right, Larry, uh, Harry, you're right, because I'm starting to ask questions about it. Okay, thank you, I'm all...
Just because...
Yeah, no, I'm with you.
She's not here, Tilly's not here, and I'd rather have the five of us discuss it all together, and we can have an intelligent discussion on it. Rather than bring her up to speed on it.
I agree.
I, I would hope she, she'd appreciate that. Tim?
No, I'm all set.
Good. Bob, all set? Howard, anything?
Uh...
Concerns?
No, I just have a question about, the bus stop is now located at the, at the intersection.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that in addition to the one you were proposing on Searl Street, or that's the only one?
That's the only one.
Okay. What happens with that parcel at the end? Because there was some previous discussion about land being set aside, and, and a portion going to each landowner and all that, is that...
It'll be landscaped, there'll probably be a subdivision sign there, and...
Are you talking where, where the exit to Searl is?
It just won't, I mean, if they want to...
It's not going to be a, something to coordinate for a bus stop?
No, I mean, it seems...
No, but it, you know, it's available if the town said, hey, we want to add a bus stop there. I don't think that would be a problem.
Oh, you could. So, it, it's either going to be one interior, or it's going to be one interior and one on Searl Street. Okay.
So, that, that area is available if it's, if it's needed.
That would be another where the school district would...
Way in.
Input.
I, I just want to note something that may have just slipped under, but it, it is, under the discussion of what's been happened for this easement in this walk, there was this cart path that was a concern early on in the process, or walking path. There was some historic element to it. Everybody knew it was there. The developer has big cognizance of it and has provided some type of connection to it, as opposed to it ending over here.
Is, is that a connection? Or does it, just a little bit?
It's a woods road.
Right, right. I'm familiar with the deeds. I'm, I'm just concerned about in practice...
That's the old alignment, and now they can come up the sidewalk and make the connection to get onto the wood road.
So, does the sidewalk, the pavement of the sidewalk terminate? I'm, I'm not...
No, it's just like any other driveway cut, where the sidewalk goes up to the driveway cut. Be an apron there.
Yeah, that was really, yeah.
That's it. I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that has a question or a comment, or... I, I see some hands. First one I saw. Sir, did, I, I need to ask, did you sign the slip so we have the...
The pen was running out of ink a little bit.
Ah, you're just trying to get my, my marker. I know you are, I'm like...
They need to come up with a mic, too.
Would, would you, would you come up, sir, so that we can hear you?
So, I had a couple of questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name, sir.
Andy McLaughlin. In this initial review that Mr. Graham did of the plan, there were, if I count correctly, nineteen suggested waivers, proposed waivers by the applicant. I just wondered, how many are left?
Good question.
Nine.
Joe, nine?
And is one of the, one of the nine, the waiver that is forward to the eight or a half foot limit?
Yes.
Okay. And I think I have one other question at this point. With the recent change of the void structure, how does the voting proceed toward the, some of the considerations that are being asked of it?
I can answer that for you. With the passing of Mr. Rich, Rob Hoover is, is now, in essence, filling his seat. However, he cannot vote on this. The, the people that will be allowed to vote under the Mullins law are Tim, Bob, myself, and Tilly Evangelista.
So, how do you, you know, is there a tie? How do you, how do you decide, yea or nay? Do you have four members voting?
A motion is made, and if it's a tie, it fails.
If it's a tie, what?
It fails.
Okay.
Just a technical...
Can't give you anything more than that.
Just a technical clarification. So, I'm occupying the seat that I was elected to. Tim is now filling out the next year of...
Right, but as far as this hearing is concerned...
As far as who can vote.
There's been consistency. Tim, Rob, Tilly, myself.
And there's no restriction on the questions or for other...
Absolutely not. He's just not, because of the Mullins law, he's not able to vote. Rob, Rob isn't eligible to vote on it. That's the only difference. But he's certainly a full member of the board and in every other aspect. Anybody else? I saw another hand.
Yeah, Jack Grossline, Sixteen Lisa Lane. If you could indulge us for a second and go back to the cul-de-sac where Lisa Lane is where we live, you'll see that our, that's our lot right there, and that's our swimming pool right there. Now, if you follow that, you have a twenty-foot no-cut line on all along the rest of the properties, along Bussing Lane, and then it swoops in right next to ours, and we've been in contact with the builder, and we're in discussions with them to try to work out some issues, but, and we understand that the, the location of that house, there's limited places they might be able to put that there for a variety of reasons. So, there may, may not be room for the same level of no-cut zone, but just as a public record, we'd like to just point out that, you know, is there a way of providing some sort of a, a no-disturb, no-cut, is it five feet from the property, ten feet? I don't know what that, that measurement is, but we'd certainly like to have as much of a green buffer there, where the trees are planted on our property, the other adjacent property. I'm sure someone moving into that house are not going to want to see, see us jumping into our diet and into our pool every day. So, I'm not sure how you would represent that on this map, and what the, what the board, how the board feels about that. I just wanted to point that out.
Something I'm not understanding. Rich, could you tell me what this?
That's a fence.
Okay, I understand.
Stonewall.
Stonewall, yeah, that's a stonewall. Do you have a response to that? With respect to being able to provide a little bit of buffer there?
I, I...
I'm looking at it, I'm looking at your grading.
I think that, that, I mean, I'm not intimately familiar, but I have drawn a few sketches providing an open space parcel, and, and I'm not sure where the, where that sits, but, I mean, there are some options out there that we presented to the, to, to the gross lines, I believe.
What about, what about, what about just a planting, an additional planting there of staggered row of red pines, white pines, Austen pines, arborvitae?
Is the rock wall a limitation? Is that rock wall, I would imagine is your boundary, you're going to maintain it, right?
Oh, yeah, of course.
So, it would have to be on one side or the other, and, I don't know, maybe both. Maybe both might be an option.
Just to sort of clarify, they've, they've been very willing to work with us in, in providing a, a buffer strip and for planting of trees that primarily is, is from, essentially where Lisa Lane begins to a point about, well, maybe a little bit past the pool area, where, where the pool and the, but then there's a strip from the back of the pool to the back of our property line, which they're, they're saying they don't have the ability to provide a buffer zone there from a property donation, if you will. And we're just wondering, is there a way to, you know, is there some sort of a five-foot, ten-foot, you know, no-cut, maybe planting some sort of a green, evergreen kind of area border there? Obviously, the larger the better, but...
Realistically speaking, would you be able to do that without removing that wall?
It's very close in that area where that is.
God bless.
It could be, it could be planted. It could be, it could be plantings planted subsequent to, to, to the work and, and provide a screen. I mean, that could happen. I mean, there are a lot of, there are a lot of options. Let's put it that way.
Could, could you, when you, when you, if planting is going to be part of a solution for this, could you add that to when you do the drawings and you do your plant list, to incorporate it for that set? If, if you're going to propose that?
I, I will definitely, we'll talk it over and, and the revised planting, the revised plans will show whatever we're
Sure.
able to do.
I, I, I would suggest that, you know, you can get a, an eight-foot arborvitae in the ground for a couple hundred bucks. You do a staggered row of those, and you've got a really good screen that is as tall as you want to let it grow. It's just short money.
Great. Could I, could I, Jeff?
Please do, please do. We're, we're brainstorming this right now, trying to solve the problem, right?
You know, if, if the driveway would come in and swing a little wider to this side, and then just, and then, and then put the turnaround over in here, as opposed to going in that direction, I, I think then you could preserve this area, maybe with just a very short wall coming into the garage, so you're really, your disturbed area could be down in this, in this area, so. And this is one of the cases. In most, in most cases, you don't really define the limits of, of how a house is built, how the driveway is built.
Exactly. I know I'm kind of overreaching here from subdivision.
But in this particular case, because we, you know...
Well, we're trying to do that for the...
The suggestion was the twenty-five-foot no-cut in here, and I was part of that, because it appeared at that time that we couldn't do anything, but now that I look at it a second time, you know, maybe a five or a ten or fifteen-foot strip could be maintained here by just redesigning the driveway approach to that garage coming in the side entrance.
Can we get the applicant to agree to explore that?
We'll take a look at that, and we'll have a revise on the next set of plans.
Yeah, a couple of feet could make a huge difference.
Which will be out before the beginning of next week.
Before the beginning of next week?
Yep.
That, that's one thing. This information is great that you prepared. If, it would be really helpful, though, to have it in the packets when prior to showing up to the meetings with them. It's really hard to, to get information the night of a meeting and absorb it. So, it's great information.
I agree.
Really appreciate it.
I agree. That's why I'm not even reading it, I mean...
Well, it's just an outline. It's not additional information by all means, but I, I can provide it ahead of time. I mean, I didn't have it all ahead of time, but...
Well, handing things out the night of the meeting is hard.
It is. It's just a summary, though. It's not, it's not additional information.
I understand.
Okay. It's just use a tool for you.
Are you sure? There might be a comma or a period there.
I tell you, it's, it's a summary for you.
But reorganizing information is very helpful. So, we're not going, aren't you...
Well, that was the point. You, it's all in your packets, every, every, every lick of information, but the point is, it's tough to pull everything. It's a pain. I get it.
It's a drill effort, it's not easy.
No.
I see another hand.
Yeah, and Grossline, Sixteen Lisa Lane. I just was wondering, have you ever thought about a stop sign at the end of the new development?
Coming off of Lisa Lane as it intersects, the, the new extension of Lisa Lane, so to speak, as it intersects Searl Street?
Yeah. Would you ever consider doing anything like that?
I, I don't think we're looking at the right graphic here. We're, we're looking where it intersects at the terminus, or whatever you want to call it, right?
We have stop signs at both intersections.
There is one there?
Yep. It's not on the sheet, but we have proposed the stop sign and a stop bar there, and...
No, I mean, at the end of the, our...
They meant at the circle.
At the circle.
At the circle?
Yeah.
At, on the curve? Because the circle's not going to really exist anymore. It's a curve. You're going to put a...
There's not going to be an intersection.
It's not going to be a...
Not an intersection.
Because it's like, sort of, you know how Pillsbury Lane is, where you're coming down Pillsbury Lane, you come into the new development, and there's a stop sign there?
I mean, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to, if I, if I may, comment on that.
Please, please.
That radius is, occurs on other parts of the street. It's on a curve that is within your minimum centerline radius requirements. So, it's like a curve on a street, and we've got sight distance there. In fact, we've got a sight distance easement there, so that people can see around that corner. It would be an easy thing, construction-wise, to put a stop sign there, but I don't think it really makes a lot of sense.
I, I'm not seeing why you would, why anyone would stop there. Are you just looking for traffic coming?
Well, at least that when people go down Lisa Lane, a lot of people come down a little faster on Lisa Lane.
Oh.
So, already they do. And so, if you go around the corner, they're going to keep going fast.
Mm-hmm.
Or...
Go speed limit sign or slow.
And if you're coming out, they start coming, they do.
Speed bumps.
Or speed bump or something.
Yeah.
Just to slow people down.
Well, you know what I, I think? I think...
What do you think of that?
That's a really nice place for one of the cruisers to sit, right there, if anybody from the Boys and Blue are listening. And they can slow that traffic right down, because that sounds like an enforcement issue. That's just my opinion.
Eric, where's the Paul Wilkins place? I had a question about the, the other stop signs in the, that exist in residential areas that are there already. I think there was six proposed stop signs.
Larry can probably play our, our...
I know Larry said that the one at Searl Street was going to be eliminated and changed. Is that the only one?
Yes. All the rest of them are to be erected and paint, paint line, painted stop lines as well.
Do you think they're excessive?
I'd go with it.
As, as someone who drives regularly through the neighborhood, because to be perfectly honest with you, I took a ride through there, and I was trying to envision a stop sign on each end, and I'm, I'm not going to argue with the traffic engineer. I, I just, I just thought it was a little...
Can I finish?
Absolutely. I'm looking for your, your opinion.
If you go to Mass DOT, they have suggestions and regulations.
Familiar with them, I have some of those.
Mass DOT basically has given the authority to all cities and towns to put up any signs they want, with the exception of heavy truck and posted speed limits. If those don't go through Mass DOT, they're, by state law, they're not enforceable. So, those temporary signs, even if they don't listen to the speed limit, if they don't go through Mass DOT, they're not enforceable. With the stop signs, Mass DOT has made suggestions, and they've done studies that actually shown that the more stop signs you put, the faster people go, from one, one stop sign to a second stop sign. All right? And it's usually the residents in that area, because as far as the state's concerned, they want to get people from point A to point B in the fastest manner they can.
They want to move them.
And then the cities and towns turn around, put stop signs wherever they want, and that contradicts what they're saying. So, they suggest, and they recommend that any of these issues go in front of a traffic committee. Now, as far as I know, we have a traffic committee in the cities and the town. I think there's three...
There's a traffic committee. I don't know if it's active or not.
Have they, have any say on this?
Well, is it non-existent, or...
Well, I don't think they've met, and, and I don't know if members have been reappointed, and if it's active in that way, if there's, not necessarily, not only are they not meeting, but people's appointments may have expired and not been reappointed, so. I, I can look into it, so.
With that being said, they strongly suggest not putting stop signs on Truways, which unfortunately, it would be a Truway stop sign on Lisa Lane, and all the signs on Searl Street would be Truway stop signs. At, at, at Searl and Fieldstone, that would be a Truway stop sign. I just think it's a lot of stop signs for a small area, and it's going against...
I agree with you, sir, but I'll, I don't know how the board feels about it.
Well, if, if, if the boards, you know, for whatever reason, is not comfortable with, with Larry's recommendations, the, the only place that I can think of where you would go then to get another opinion would be to a traffic engineer and outside. would be to a traffic engineer and outside independent group to review it. It's the only technical expertise out there, I think.
Call me crazy, but I just drive through the area and I make the call. That's how I do it, and that's what I did. I think they're pretty redundant. That's just my personal view. To rely on whatever expertise you wish to rely on. I don't know, does the board wish to? Any changes with respect to the stop sign? Do we have anything that shows the extent of, in a drawing?
No.
But I'm sure we have it in our minds, right? Maybe a quick diagram or a quick sketch of the area showing where all the stop signs are would be helpful.
Do you have that, the construction...
Maybe this is something for our next meeting, and we could...
Could you kind of look at it? Because we listed them. Larry listed them in his letter. If you wanted to look at the construction, remember the access group? You can see all of the...
Yeah, we have a graphic showing that.
It's going to be... Right, but you see where all the intersections are. So it's basically... So you do signage on Searl before the... Oh, that's different. Okay. I can't see because I have my glasses. Okay, on Searl and Fieldstone. Right there. So that's an intersection. Marlboro and Fieldstone. Marlboro and White Pines. Yep. And on Woodland and Ledge. And then Woodland and Tenny. So, I mean, they all are intersections, but if the board deems it to be excessive, you know, the only issue that our traffic consultant had believing that the DOT would not support and that the type of traffic did not warrant a stop sign was the three-way with the Searl-Lisa. That's the only one that he had strong objections to. The others, he said, if you want to slow traffic, it's an intersection, you can put them on. And some of them are, oh, God bless you, some of them are merely replacements and/or, you know, a sign coupled with the stop line.
I don't know. How do you feel?
If Larry is on board with, you know, what your agent...
Who's your traffic? Dan Mills, MDM.
Same guys have hooked up and whatnot. Yeah, I mean, if they're on the same page, then that's good for me.
Yeah, I'm not a technical expert in that regard. So if Larry's our guy and he's in agreement with their traffic, I... Well, I'd question it.
Larry's recommendations rule, I would guess. Do it that way then. I'm only one member dissenting. Any other comments? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. That answers your question, I assume. Hand?
Kevin Duncan, 46 South Street, two hands. I just have a couple of things. One is, they're looking for so many waivers from you. Are you also looking for another set of waivers from the Conservation Committee? Are they in this package?
There are no waivers being requested from the Conservation Committee at this point. There are none.
Okay, I did speak to Steve.
Technical correction, Conservation Commission.
I did speak to Steve today. They're not, the open space is a great idea, but it's pretty much unusable out there. He pretty much agreed, so...
I have to disagree with the unusable.
It's beautiful, nature walk. I'm out there all the time with my dog. I'm just saying. But you have the Wood Road, too, so maybe you don't need to put in the parking locks.
Oh, that's...
Just to give you your voice there from...
Not against the development. As long as everything's done, nice.
The developer's been most gracious in widening the access and completing that wraparound. And what we sometimes don't see is the big picture when you pull back. And there are other land holdings in the town that the town has. And that 100-foot strip, in conjunction with parcel F, creates a connectivity to other parcels of land, recreational parcels, conservation parcels, something that's been termed the Greenway. And I don't think we have a graphic of it, but if we did, I think you'd... I think you'd appreciate why that connection needs to be...
I could actually, before I even donate something, during that next parcel right over there.
Right.
Which is the left of that gray line there, 44 Searl.
44.
With Vernal Pool.
Right here.
Oh, I understand.
Like, I'm all the way down.
I understand.
End up with another whole big portion.
Maybe you need to talk to Jim Demento. He's on the CPC.
What am I being asked to do? Thanks for calling.
Yes, sir. Oh, absolutely, but it's going to be...
I'd like to make a quick statement.
Absolutely. You're a member of the public.
I just got an email when I, I just got this phone yesterday, so I don't know how to use it. But the Highway Committee is Tripoli, the Highway Department, and the Police Department. And it is an active committee, so I just...
Excellent.
I can't retire who sent it to me.
Who's on it?
Phil Tripoli.
Selectmen Tripoli.
The head of the Highway and the head of the Police Department.
Peter Durkey and Donald Covmar.
So it is active.
Sounds like a three, yeah.
I have traced it to there. That's about it. If you can find out how to get there. Because I've only had the phone a week, so...
Have to ask your kid how to use it. Any more questions, comments? I'm not seeing any. I'm not seeing any hands. Any last words you'd like to say before we continue this?
No.
Everybody good with continuing?
Sure.
I need to ask you a question, Mr. Williams. If this board were to continue this to our very next meeting, it would be...
The 11th.
The 11th of June. You would need to provide full plans at least one week before that meeting. And I don't want to put you in an impossible deadline.
No, it's no problem.
I know we've asked for a lot of changes.
Where our plans are 90% complete. We'll be finishing them up in the next few days. So it's no problem.
And I'll email my list to Howard so he can send them to you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, PDFs.
The list is really great. It's helpful. It's really helpful.
PDF, too.
Well, if you can get these in Excel, that would be great.
Oh, they are in Excel?
That's what I assumed.
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, don't just save the PDFs.
I'll send them to you in Excel.
It's nice to have the PDFs of the plans.
Yeah, we always send the PDFs.
Great. Anybody want to make a motion to continue this to June 11?
So move.
Motion by Tim Howard to continue to June 11. These are seconded by Bob Watts. Any discussion?
Still not going to be here, though?
I would certainly hope so, and if not, we'll have to do it ourselves. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I have to do a two-minute break, so... That work for everybody? We're going to take a two-minute, two-minute recess.
Do they watch them?
Yeah.
My own break.
You're not leaving, are you?
No.
You've got to stay here for that.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. We're back from our recess. We are now going to open the continuation of the East Main Street parking rec facility. It was continued from, when did we continue this from a couple?
April 9.
April 9. Thank you, Howard. And without any further ado, would you please introduce yourself for the, for the record?
My name is Ryan Morrison. I'm here from Gail Associates.
I'm Bill Seymour. I'm the project manager from Gail Associates.
I'm Jim Demento from the Georgetown Park and Rec. And I also want to present one member, someone from the United Foam who was requested at the last meeting to attend. Representative for United Foam has requested.
Excellent.
Hi, Bob.
Bob, you want to come to the front of church?
I was expecting all the neighborhood to show up, no?
Yeah, pretty much.
Evidently, you are the Butters.
I think they did at the first 20 hearings. I think we wore them out.
Wore them out, huh?
Bob, what is your position with United?
I'm the general manager there in Massachusetts.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Why don't you, why don't you lead us down the, down the path and show us what, what changes have been made since the last iteration of the plan?
I think the last time we were here, we reintroduced the product, the project as we had taken it over. And a whole lot of changes haven't been made. The last time we were here, Larry had yet to review the, he hadn't had the time yet to review our stormwater calc's in reference to that front section which you guys had concerns over. So, we continued the meeting in order to let Larry have time to review those and make comments. Since then, we formally provided a response letter to Larry's comments, which he's been able to go through along with the set of plans. And I, we have actually received a written response back from Larry, but we have had some verbal back and forth. We met with Larry, I think in the beginning of May, to kind of go over any concerns he might have. And then he verbally got back to us yesterday regarding a few issues he saw with the plans. But I think Larry can kind of respond to that as far as what, what problems he might have. We have provided plans to Howard regarding some of Larry's responses of yesterday regarding signage and some dimensioning and other comments he had regarding the parking lot, which we can go over. But I think maybe having Larry speak to what his comments might be first would, would help us along with that, to go through the plans.
Sounds like a great idea. Larry, could you, could you, I know that you had extensive comments. Can you list the ones that at this point aren't resolved, so to speak, that you're not happy with?
Yeah. And, and I, yeah, not resolved is not a good term and not happy with is not the right one either. But.
Characterize it.
Yeah.
Anything you think we should know?
Yeah. I've been through the drainage calculations that they submitted for the entire site. And my main concern has always been from this half point right in here out to East Main Street. And the existing conditions put a lot of water off of the existing paved driveway out on the East Main Street, which I observed during a major downpour last year. Their revised plans and their drainage calculations do indicate that their post-development flows will be less or equal to the pre-development peaks and queues coming out on East Main Street.
Right.
And the way that they have arrived at that is by including the sidewalk on the west side of the road that they're proposing to be permeable pavement, forest pavement, permeable pavement sidewalk. And the grade along here is about, average about four and a half percent. Forest pavement recommendations with DEP and the manufacturers and anybody that comments on it is the flatter the better, but five percent is like the max. So, they're, they're right at the top of the, of the scale as far as the recommended slope for a sidewalk to get the effectiveness of the forest pavement. I agree that during the slow rains, the steady rains that the forest pavement sidewalk is going to function and that we will most likely get an equal or reduction in drainage coming out on East Main Street. When you get a downpour though, it's not going to have time. You're going to get a film over it and it's going to slide off to the road and down to East Main Street. And we're going to get a momentary rise, peak, higher peak than what's there. Irregardless of what the drainage calculations say, I'd do them, but from a practical point of view, that's what's going to happen.
Wouldn't that happen with grass strip too? I mean, after the first, I can drain, it just runs, right? Nothing you can do about it.
The.
This is a sidewalk, though. It's not grass.
What I have.
Right, but even if that were all grass, you'd still have the same effect. After that first 24 hours, it's sheeting. Just sheeting.
This is a sidewalk. What I have kind of arrived at is that, and I'm glad that the representative of the Butter is, is here with this business, is what I observed is most of this water on East Main Street flows down the northerly side and then flows across her parking lot into the wetlands over here. And my recommendation to the board is that if they understand the plans and they understand that this will occur, might occur, but probably most likely will occur, when we have these heavy, intense downpours and they're willing to accept it and the board is going to accept their acceptance, then I'm, I'm fine with what they propose as far as drainage goes.
Let's go forward with that. And we have the general, well, I'm sorry.
General manager.
The general.
General, I like that. Yeah, if I understand it correctly, and what the way it's been explained to us is basically, it's no worse than what we have today. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Then we're, we're in support of it, to use what the recommends.
Well, maybe I misunderstood. What I thought I heard you say was that you thought that in a heavy, heavy rain downpour, even though the calculations are showing X, that it in fact could be more.
It, it, it could be in, in those very intense periods of time.
So, I just want to be clear with you that in the heavy rains, they're not saying it's going to be the same. Well, the applicant's saying it's going to be the same.
The calculations say.
Calculations. What the town is, what the town's technical review agent is saying is that in the heavy downpours, it's probably going to be more.
And it's probably a duration of maybe 10 minutes or 15 minutes or something like that.
Yeah, again, well, if there are ways of remedying it, we would say, that's up to the board to kind of talk about. But it's difficult for us to assess because if we're looking at what we were told coming in, is it would be no greater than what we have now. We've been dealing with it for a number of years. You know, we've got a lot of property there, so it would raise concerns. But let me ask you, in terms of winter time, is it a similar risk where you can get sheeting and ice?
No, I don't think so. Because that's not when you have the storms, the rains that we're talking about. It's, it's the August thunderstorms that, you know, are the early spring thunderstorms, early spring.
I would add to that, that, that in the last 40 years, New England's temperature has risen two degrees. This is, these are observational facts. They're not theory. And the general consensus in the latest federal report, 821-page report that just came out with all science, is that in the next, by 2060, there's a good chance that the temperature is going to rise in New England another eight degrees. Now, that's just misinformation for people to go, oh, wow. But my point in that to you is that these rain situations we're having, they're not going to get less. They're going to get a lot worse as the years go by.
Excellent point. I agree with you 100%. And all the more reason why this summer we need to review, in conjunction with the CONCON, we need to review the stormwater standards that we have for this town.
I agree.
Cornell numbers have to be addressed.
I agree.
Bottom line right now is, if I'm understanding this correctly, this meets the 100-year storm standard. This meets DEP's approved standards right now. There really isn't any other question, as far as I'm concerned. This is every standard that we deal with in every subdivision. True, this is a special permit. I remind people, this is a park. That is a driveway.
Harry, it's a, you call it a driveway. It's a, it's a, it's a, how many cars in that parking lot?
I'm gonna say 40-something.
100 to 100.
Still that many?
There was 100. It might be less now.
It's decreased, yep.
There's like 90. Parking lot is not a driveway.
It's not a driveway, Harry.
It doesn't fit any of those subdivision standards.
Harry, it's a road. That's a, that's a road. It's not a driveway. It's a 95-car parking lot.
That's a parking lot, and that's, that's not the subcatch.
That traffic, if that gets full.
That's not the subcatch.
Which has its own.
But that's not efficient.
Right, that's not the subcatch.
It's not, no, it is germane in terms of the discussion, not the drainage. It's germane in terms of the definition of driveway versus a road. It is germane to that. In any event, so back to your.
We've got a few courts that are wider than that.
And, and there's two other things that, that deal with the Butter to the west there. And one is there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of grading proposed that goes, slips over the property land. There's some vegetation removal in here. And then lastly, at the last board meeting, the board generally discussed how to, well, you discussed whether or not you wanted a sidewalk here. And the consensus was, yes, the sidewalk should be here. And now the sidewalk ends right here coming from town. There's their driveway opening is there, but then there's no sidewalk from this point to the driveway opening. And that was part of the discussion. And I think probably this, this application should address that connection. So, all three of those things involve the Butter in some way or shape or form. How that, how that sidewalk connection gets made. Does it get made in the, you know, on this side of the right-of-way line where there is some room between the edge of pavement and, well, this is the edge of pavement right here. That's the curb. This is a little green strip from the plantings. Does it get made along here, which is pretty consistent with the way it ends here? Are, does it get made on private property? Probably not because they use this for parking and.
Snow storage.
Planting.
It's snow storage, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it get made, does the board want it to happen? It seems that if there is a sidewalk here and the idea is that because the sidewalk here is going to encourage people to run or walk from town to get to these fields, that this little void of, area for safe pedestrian travel should be, should be filled. So, those are the three things in that, in that area and on that sheet.
Could we address the drainage up where Rob was talking about, at the parking area? Do you have any concerns up there?
I don't, no.
I wasn't talking about drainage up there.
I'm concerned with drainage.
Okay, okay.
That, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other?
I have some other things that are back on the parking lot on C102.
Strangest concerns are good with the parking lot or?
If Butter is okay with it, I think I'd recommend the board accept it. There are a number of things on here. Do you want to highlight what you've done on the plans in response to my conversation with John yesterday?
Sure.
I don't, yeah.
I don't know if you can zoom in a little bit more on the parking lot. Are these the set of plans that I gave you today?
Yeah.
He emailed you today?
Okay.
So, one of Larry Graham's comments was regarding providing pavement in this area. Previously, this was a hatch to be stoned dust, but we couldn't provide pedestrian striping on stoned dust. So, we've provided pavement in this area, similar to the areas, I think, since the last time you guys have seen these plans. There wasn't pavement in the handicap parking areas, which wouldn't allow us to stripe those for handicap parking. It also wouldn't provide handicap access. Another comment that Larry had was regarding these islands at this section here. Previously, they had come down short of the parking space and didn't provide a barrier between the parking space and the entrance. So, Larry had us extend those up to the top of the parking lot. Another comment Larry had was that we hadn't provided dimensions in a few areas in the parking lot. And since then, we have provided dimensions, particularly here at the, at this entranceway, along the backside here, this driveway here, and these two aisles. I think one dimension here and another dimension here. Another comment Larry had is since we had taken over the plans from, I believe it was Lou, we had lost some signage that he had had in different areas of the lot. And since then, we've provided signage notes to denote that this is a one-way, a do-not-enter sign in this area, pedestrian crossing signs here and here, as well as handicap parking spaces here. I believe there is a 20 mile per hour speed limit sign here, as well as, I think if you went back a page, there's a 20 mile per hour speed limit sign somewhere right here. And we've added a detail in the detail sheets that takes those notes and denotes what sign that we're going to be providing.
Assign schedule.
Yep, assign schedule. Trying to think of other, oh, another comment Larry had was that previously back here, the spaces we had provided, we had a dimension that was off. We had fixed the parking spaces so that they're appropriate width. And that caused us to lose an additional spot back here.
And I'm just going to interrupt you.
Sure.
At your satisfaction at this point, Larry?
Yeah, yeah, going through the, you know, things we talked about.
Larry, is there something I'm missing here?
Yeah, the, the cable.
Oh, absolutely. We changed the note. Right here says wood post. This, this, previously we had wood post and cable as a detail. And Larry had a concern of children running into the cable.
Cable and clotheslining.
Yep. So, we pulled the cable out of that. And it's, we're going to provide, per Larry's comments, a wood post on each corner of the parking spaces in between the curb stops. And that'll provide a visual barrier for the people pulling into the parking space to kind of delineate the two different lines. So, we're going to pull the cable out of that system.
As part of those discussions, is the 18-foot dimension of the length of the angled parking?
Yeah, no, actually.
Correct versus?
No, actually, that should be.
Is that short?
Yeah, it should be on the, on the perpendicular. This, that's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah. This should be the dimension from here to here, the normal, not the, not on the skew. So, we could get that fixed.
So, that'll, that'll bump that.
Bump that out.
Out.
Yeah. I think that was it. There was a little editorial about re-labeling those concrete sidewalk versus forest pavement. That was a little bit further to the left.
Yep, I think that's on C101. Yep.
Is that being corrected?
Oh, right there. Four-foot wide permeable pavement sidewalk.
And then a comment that I thought about later on your detail of your permeable sidewalk, permeable pavement sidewalk or forest pavement.
I think that's going to be on the other set.
Yeah, I think it's on 101 or 102 or somewhere up in there. You don't, I think the contractor will do it or the, the subdivision inspector, if he inspects this, will have to remove all the A and the B layer and, and get down to, to a subsoil that's going to accept the, what we want it to, the water coming through the forest pavement and backfill with the clean granular materials. So, I think that needs to be added to that detail on number three there on that sheet. I don't think that's on there.
Right here.
Roadway it said, right?
Oh, that's, that's a roadway. I think that detail is on another sheet, like 101.
Oh, right. We provided the sidewalk detail.
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, another comment you had made, Larry, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, was that we hadn't provided a pitch in those details on 101 and 102. And we've updated that since, on the sheets that we're looking at here with Howard. I think those should have a grade on them now so that they'll, they have a little bit of pitch back to the roadway.
Where are you?
At the top. If you zoom into that detail up there.
Up here.
Yep.
Yep.
Sorry, pointing at it with my hand. So, we provided a pitch in that area at 1% like we discussed. So we provided a pitch in that area at one percent like we discussed.
Oh, we just do, but the forest pavement on it. Other than that area, I think they, uh, they got everything.
Just to be clear, um, so you want us to bump that out so that it's in the perpendicular distance, it's gonna be eighteen feet? And then the other was to make a comment regarding removing the A and B layers beneath the permeable pavement.
The replacement.
Yep.
What are the width of those parking spaces?
Ten feet.
Ten?
Nine feet.
Nine feet, how's that work with a whole lineup of SUVs pulled in there?
Oh, that's funny, that really, yeah. A lot of standards now are seven and a half for compact and eight and a half for standard.
And I, as I recall, that it needs to be angled like this because that you couldn't do it, uh, anymore going in this direction, correct?
It allowed us to keep out of that, a buffer in this area.
Right, the, the buffer line's right here, so you're right on.
Does that impact?
I'd have to review how far it comes out, whether that actually will affect them. But I think there's enough room, I'd have to, I'd have to see how far it comes out.
I think this seven-foot wide trench can be through there, it's just you can't get the gravel.
Right.
You can't encroach it now.
The, uh, five oh one shows the sidewalk detail, five oh one. Just to show what Larry was talking about.
But, what's the? Well, you gotta, uh, I need more, sorry.
Detail sheet.
That's the wrong detail sheet.
C five oh one.
C five oh one?
Howard, I think that's the old, an old drawing set.
Right.
This was the one we were given?
No, you have the right set, yep, I think the one he had up on the screen wasn't right.
Maybe. No, but I, I, I don't, I don't have that electronically, I don't think. Cause we're looking at this right now.
If you go back to the one on April first, I think that was one of Lou's old sets, I believe, that you had up.
Yeah, those are saying thirteen.
Oh, it is the same.
I, I, I think, did that say thirteen?
Yeah, I believe that's one of Lou's old set that he has electronically, that's not the same plan set that we.
Well, we don't have it. At any rate, it's. Is this a special permit?
Yes, yes. Yes, it is.
Can you?
I, I'm assuming Larry, you're all set, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Can you explain that, um, design, uh, going into the parking lot? If you blow up the second entrance, why there's the island and the, that, yeah, just what was, what's the thinking behind that design versus just a driveway coming in?
We actually came up with that, it was to separate, keep people when they were going up that way, so they would enter in, that was when we decided that the, the flow of traffic through there would be in that counterclockwise direction.
I don't get it.
It originally started without an island.
Well, that, that's a drop-off, isn't it?
Is that, oh, so that's a drop-off, that's how it's, what's functioning, oh, okay, alright.
So the idea is they drive in, drop off, turn around, or you don't know that way or go straight.
These are just, um, the, the, these are just minor items, um, on your signpost detail, uh, you have a typo on sheet C five oh seven. It's just a typo. It's like, it's a word, a couple of words repeat themselves. C five oh two, C five oh seven. Signs and sign supports must conform to conform, it's just a typo. On the, um, on the signs that you do have for handicap parking and whatnot, um, since this is a park, it would be great if they could be a little more park-like versus galvanized steel, you know? Even if they were fresh-treated wood, um, anything, uh, would be more park-like, I think, than galvanized steel. That's just a suggestion. How tall is the fence along the walk?
UFP has asked that we provide a six-foot fence along the walk, um, by their building and along the backside of their building with screening. Um, they store a lot of materials back there, and they just kinda wanted to screen off that area, so that area is six-foot, yep.
So it's a six-foot fence that runs parallel to the sidewalk?
Correct.
And it's black vinyl?
Could be green vinyl, uh, not, not, not green vinyl, but like a green windscreening or a green vinyl.
The detail says a black vinyl would be, is, is great, cause that just fades away in the background.
That's the intent.
Yeah, okay, I, I didn't know how high it was, the drawing doesn't indicate the height, so maybe you'll, I, you'll get to that.
It's detailed in a couple of.
Sidewalk, it's detailed, but it's.
But detailed, excuse me, it's called out.
I think right there, it's called out, with screening.
Oh, okay.
The first sheet, first or second.
Up there, okay.
I think the first, yeah, it was called out, that's the only reason I recognize it.
Just a, uh, it, it was actually, the other applicant had it too, but where the sidewalk in this drawing shows, see how the sidewalk starts to come into the road and forms that pie-shaped sliver? Yeah, right there?
Yes.
Maybe you guys already do it on your construction documents, but to avoid that pie-shaped sliver, which you can't, you can't take care of it, it's, you know, just to come in with a radius and a ninety-five, so type, you know, ties in the ninety to the curb, and it's a, it looks like someone consciously designed it versus it just kinda, yeah. The handicap parking detail on sheet C five oh two, um, or sheet five oh seven, it says it's twenty feet long? But I think you have eighteen on the plan?
Yep.
So, which one is it?
I believe the intent is to keep it eighteen feet long that's on the plan.
Okay.
And it's a.
Okay.
Typo in the back, yep.
So you wanna get that down.
So we're changing, what was that sheet, what?
Five oh seven.
Five oh seven.
Eighty-five oh seven?
Yeah, changing then. Question on note thirty, uh, how do you enforce note thirty on the, on G zero zero two, how does that get enforced, that note?
I have memories on that.
That note is that all work is subject to a one-year warranty, um, anniversary of substantial completion, but then, for cast-in-place concrete, there's an actual second warranty, which requires an additional, uh, review of the work and approving it. And I'm just wondering, so how does that, how do we make sure that that happens?
The way I read those notes, and I brought this up previously, because a lot of these notes are drafted in that same type of language.
Right.
It was, or is that, those are warranties of the contractor to the owner.
Yes.
Not of the, of the owner to the board. Those are contractual requirements of the con, of the builder.
But who, who goes out and reviews it to make sure?
Me too.
So, you guys are going to be engaged for construction administration and for this work?
Yes.
Got it, okay, that answers that question. So this is a project that's not for, gonna be used in the winter, is that right? You guys have shut it down in the winter? That was my understanding?
It's my understanding, it's like.
Wow.
Yep, it was gonna be shut off in my block.
So, so if, if that's the case, and this is to protect the gravel and all that you have out there, um, if that's the case, it would be good to put on the drawings that, you pick the dates, whatever determines winter for you guys, but that there's something on the drawing that says this park is closed from such and such a date to such and such a date. Um, and that, then it's on the drawings for when it's to be closed, but also then to enforce that. Um, the only way I know how to enforce that is to have a very simple gate that you put up.
There a gate shown with the wire there?
Is, is there a gate?
There's a gate at the top of the hill behind the tree.
I, I can't speak for the owner.
Yeah, you can.
No, I can't, I can't, no, not in terms of operations and maintenance, but it seems to be that that type of restriction is really tying the hands of the recreation department in terms of off-season use, when, at times when it could otherwise be available. There may not.
Saying it's not snowing.
Yeah.
There's no reason to shut it down.
Exactly.
Well, my, my other side of that is, what happens when we get calls, hey, can we ice skate on the ponds? Can we cross-country ski on the trails?
But you're either using.
No.
That's right.
Which is fine.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, the conservation, the land, the part of the parking lot is provide excavation, to provide, the conservation commission has laid out that they want access to as well.
Yeah.
So shutting, not only is shutting off the park and rec land, you're also shutting off the conservation process.
I mean, I think it's great to be able to provide use of it, I, 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 I think it's great to, to have it be used in the winter, but what I'm concerned about is that you said there's no plowing, and that you've got a, a parking lot that's not paved. And, and you can't have your cake and eat it too.
My American Legion park, they don't, they don't plow it and people access it.
But people do, can just walk in there?
They park to the last parking, potential parking spot, and they, they walk in, they ice skate, and they, you know, this.
As I recall, the idea was that, uh, during, when there's snow on the ground, people would be parking at the church and walking in. Uh, that there was not consideration that the road in the parking lot be paved, because it is gravel. So.
Well, my concern is that, you know, this is another, this, this could be another example of, um, it costing the town more money later on. That in fact, people are gonna go up there and park in the winter, and there's gonna be three inches of snow on the ground, and you guys are gonna have to, the town's gonna have to come back and foot the bill to keep repairing the parking lot up there, and to repair the drive up there, because it's not paved.
I, I understand what you're saying, can I, can I see the, can I see that spot on the, on the plans where, where that gate is? I, I know I spotted it, I probably, I'm sorry, I probably dig for it, keep going, Howard, a little bit further, a little bit further.
Which area you look for though? That's the women of the paper.
It's gotta be the next sheet.
Oh, we were just on the next. I believe the gate you're looking for is on the existing conditions plan, it, there's already a gate there.
A gate?
There's a wire.
There's a wire gate that's there.
Okay, oh, that was on the existing.
It's on the existing conditions plan, that there's a wire gate at the top of that hill.
Where, in your opinion, Larry, would be an appropriate place to put something like that?
Ten, ten feet shy of the edge of pavement. Well, well, I think the most appropriate place would be up by the parking lot, or area to the church where people, if they can't go any further, they'd place, turn around, go back out.
So that's plowed, so then they can park there, and then they can walk, the gate's not gonna keep people from walking and accessing it.
I mean, there's, there's a gate existing there now, so the strategy would be.
Close to that vehicle, where it's saying vehicle stop park, right there, maybe?
Just from being up there in the winter, I know that when they plow straight up, they plow past the parking lot and leave snow in this area, so if we provided the vehicle gate somewhere back here where a plow wouldn't hit it, um, would be better than here, I guess, and they could, they would, you know, somebody driving up would be able to see the gate here and see that the road was closed, and be able to pull into that lot.
So that, that, that would need to be noted on the plan, right? Yeah, does the board feel as though that would be a good idea? Of a gate, a regular gate?
I mean, it can, it can be a decorative gate, it doesn't have to, you know, it can just be a couple of pieces of wood, fresh-treated, and, um, it can be a crossbar with a brace on it, slide them open. Yeah, Camp Denison, you know, it can look like, it can look like a park.
Compacting.
It can look like a park.
Snow against it, that's the only thing. I mean, it would have to be somewhat sturdy. And, and aesthetically pleasing overall.
I mean, anything you put there with a poster.
A pipe gate, you know, like Willadales has on all their trails.
Yes, yes, maybe something like that.
That's great. People can go under it, you know, dogs, people can go under it and around it, but cars and vehicles.
And the sidewalk won't be blocked off, it'll just be the.
Yep, definitely, still with that idea.
I'm not sure why, why do we wanna put a gate up there, if somebody, if there's only three inches of snow on the ground and somebody wants to drive in there and park in the parking lot, why not?
The reason, the reason being, Tim, is that what will happen is that people will drive up there when there's not only snow on the ground, but after snow melts, and it's all soft, and it's going to put the town in the position of having to maintain that on a yearly basis, cause everything, it's, it's not a paved drive, it's all, you know, it's, what's the surface?
It'll get all mushy when the.
It'll be an ongoing maintenance issue that the town will have to pick up the tab for. But if you stop the cars, and so they park here, you still get the benefit of what they wanted to do, which was to get pe, people can access it all they want by walking into it. Um, they just can't drive down into it. They park there and they have to walk a little further, and then the town isn't going to be spending money to maintain that portion of it every year. That, that's, it's about costing the town more money.
So it's susceptible in the spring, you're saying?
Susceptible in the spring and with snow. Yeah, except, yeah, it's, it's, if winter's frozen.
Once there's frost on the ground, it wouldn't be, you're not gonna hurt the, much the roadway to drive over it.
Once it's, once it's soft.
So I don't think you can put definitive dates on when the gates open and close, it's fine to put a gate there, but I think common sense has to determine when that gate, you can't just say it's gonna be closed from December fifteenth to April fifteenth. You, you, you can't say that.
Wouldn't that be under the, uh, the direction of the parking rack?
Right, and I think it should just remain as their discretion.
I, I, I agree with that, I'm, I'm, the pipe, cause you can guess from the pipe gate.
I mean, it's park and rec property essentially, right, so you guys.
No, it's town, it's, but it's town property, and it's the, the town pays to maintain it.
No park and rec pays for that.
Where does that money come from?
They don't, doesn't come from the town if the town doesn't fund it.
But the town is funding park and rec, it's town money.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna agree with you on there, but, but the, the main thing is that the.
But I don't understand how the financing works for park and rec, but I just think it needs to remain flexible.
It's your tax dollars, it's your tax dollars, but the responsibility to maintain and keep this up falls to the parking rec, I think they're gonna do the right thing. When they see snow coming, and they say, well, cars might drive in there and might destroy the road and start skidding and a road in the surface, they're gonna lock the gate.
But like by January fifteenth, you've got frost on the ground, you're not gonna hurt it to drive over it at that point. What you have to be mindful of is more in the, like March rolls around.
Yeah.
When you're.
Cars get stuck when they go down.
Yeah.
So I think it'll be closed for a certain time for vandalism possibly, when the season's definitely over, but.
And again, that's your call.
Yeah, but if it becomes a warm, a warm, well, a decent, a decent weekend, if there's, if there's an event, a s, a snow skiing, a snow shoeing event on a weekend that there's no there's no snow, or, not, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying, uh, some event that could be down there, open the gate for a day is, you know, I mean, Camp Denison opens once in a while for.
Sounds like a judgment call.
Camp Denison's open year round, isn't it?
I don't know, I mean, I've seen it, I go and buy the gate to close sometimes, and sometimes it isn't, so.
I, I think, I think that, I mean, I think that's another part of it, that, that's hard on the public, if they don't know when it's closed and when it's not closed, um.
They do have the option to park at the church.
They, they, they always have the option to park at the church, I, I guess I just, you know, I, I guess I just don't understand how with this town and the budget and the finances that we run, um, and how challenging it is every single year, and how departments take hits, and how people don't get raises year after year after year, this is clearly an opportunity to ensure that we don't increase the maintenance monies that are being spent. And there's a way to do it, and I think by leaving it up to the park, and it's no dispersions on you guys, but it, it, it's an inconsistent response to the situation, and I think it's gonna create more work, but.
We have had, we have had parking stickers at American Legion, and we've talked about, and we, and we also have been level funded for the last probably ten years. So, I mean, if we haven't, haven't run into a funding issue, we will institute something to bring that funding back, whether it be parking stickers, like we, we, we are thinking about American Legion with the beach coming back.
Yeah.
But those are, those adjustments that the park commission has to make, uh, cause no one's increasing our budget, so, I mean, we know that, so we have to work, we have to work within those constraints.
Yeah.
I feel comfortable letting the park and rec decide when to open the gate and when to close the gate, I, I think it's.
I think the placement.
Or to place the gate.
Right, to place the gate was a good idea.
Okay.
So it is, well.
Definitely.
Can we, can we have that added somehow?
Absolutely, yep.
Make it make sense.
Thank you.
Sidewalk, pardon, I didn't notice, so just.
You're gonna be putting up a sign that says closed, dusted on.
Yes, closed, yes, closed, dusted on is probably the sign, I'm not saying it's, yeah, I hope that's the sign, that's a sign in American Legion, but, I mean, we, we kinda feather that a little bit, in June, you know, sometimes in June, it's, people stay a little bit late. So we don't have the police go down there at dusk and arrest everybody. But we do, we do have people drive through an hour or so after the close date, the police take a pass-through and make sure most people are out of the area. I mean, they.
Rob has some, good, good points, we'll get back to him.
So the, at the entrance onto East Main Street, this, um, those existing shrubs that are there, um, do they cause a problem with the sight distance? When I notice when I'm walking down there, I can't see around them.
Well, Bob and I walked out there a while ago, um, and took some measurements from the wall, a lot of the existing shrubbery regarding the, see, that would be the east side of it, or. or towards the church is actually gonna be removed. The sidewalk would take that out. That's why we're proposing shrubbery there.
Okay.
Um, and this vehicle stop bar should be out far enough into the, right away that the, the shrubbery along the front of that building shouldn't provide a sight distance problem. Because the traffic that would be against them would either be on the opposite side of the street or they'd be looking the opposite way for traffic coming this way.
Can you, can you just add a sight triangle to the drawings to make sure that whoever then puts the shrubs in, they recognize they don't wanna put a big shrub in there if it happens to intersect with that?
Sure.
I, I can tell you, we were down there, um, last year when we did a sidewalk.
Yeah.
There's, there's really good sight view. It's-
It's at the apex of the curve.
Yeah.
It, it, it's great-
The shrubs aren't very tall.
It's great that way.
Yeah.
Um, but you have to get to the end for it to be that way. You don't know that until you get there, but it, it's, it's all-
Drive down, you'll see it.
I, I just did, yeah, yeah. No, no, you can't see around the shrubs until you get to the very end.
Okay.
And, uh, let's see, surveying, not field verified, any concerns? Um, do you have any, I, I thought the survey, the property line survey had been field verified, but I guess it hadn't been in terms of the property line?
Property line survey had been done by a survey crew, um, I believe in two thousand nine or two thousand and eight.
Wrong.
That was the property line survey as well as the wetland delineation. Someone had gone out and flagged it and then, um, I forget the name of the company, but a, a survey crew actually went out there and surveyed it and we have that plan in hand and matched it. PLS, you're right.
And you, so you, so you matched it to the plan? That's all-
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, um, okay. Um, there's a note on the drawing somewhere about the rock wall, those existing rock wall disposals. That's native field stone with lichen on it. I mean, people kill for that stone. Now, I don't know what the town can do with it, but it would, you know, I don't know if you could stockpile at Peter Durkey's shop or not, but that stone is primo stone. I'd hate to see it just-
How much stone is coming out?
At the back of the lot, if you go back, uh, actually probably the existing conditions would be the best one to look at.
It's a, it's a lot of wall.
Actually, right here. So there's stone wall can-
Base support.
Oh, shh.
Go the other way.
Yep, sorry, back this way.
Yeah.
There's a stone wall right here, a stone wall that comes through here, a stone wall that comes up this way that would all be removed. Um.
Well, I'm wondering if there's any way to reuse it on the site.
Incorporate it elsewhere.
Integrate it somehow to, to preserve it, cause it's native to the site.
Is there any place to stockpile it?
In the vicinity of the curb cut. Could you strangle the curb cut on each side? It's just a stone.
The curb cut's awful tight to put a rock wall anywhere in there, yeah. About, I mean, there's, there's area here. One thing, we have to be, we're pretty close to the wetlands everywhere, so.
Go back to the church parking lot entrance.
Sure. We're providing a retaining wall here.
Got a modular retaining wall?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I wonder if Camp Denison could use them for anything.
Well, maybe you can line some of the edge of the drive along here.
Landscape contractors would pay, would pay a lot of money for that stone.
Yeah.
I mean, they go, they go searching.
If that is true, then the public bid contractor will take that into account in his or her bid and the town will derive value from that.
Sounds weird.
Not the highest value, but-
Yeah, but so there should be a line-
Oh, I don't know. It's a competitive bid. It depends how badly they want the work.
Yeah, but not, not the highest.
But there should probably be a line in the bid document specifying that there is a stone that we recognize as part of the trade-off, right?
Yeah.
Is there a fence that's along this edge?
No fence along that edge. There's a timber guard rail along that edge.
A timber guard rail?
Correct.
And the purpose of the timber guard rail is?
Just to keep cars from, from entering a wetland area and, and containing them within the roadway.
I do have a thought. If we could go back to the parking lot entrance, the one to the south. There's a, there's a fence, an existing stone wall here. You can see it and it's removed here. I'm wondering if we extend it, uh, along the property line, which is what it was intended for in the first place. We extend along the property line and then just take it along the property line until we run out of it.
You're okay?
Right in there.
The only issue with that is we've provided privacy fence here. So it would either be up against the privacy fence because this is UFP's back lot.
Mm-hmm.
So if we, we'd have to provide it in front of the U, in front of the six-foot screening fence and that rock wall would kind of up, up against that in that detail.
That's okay.
Okay.
That's okay.
And I may even suggest that you, you take your lineage calculation and instead of installing this timber guard rail, you install that, cause the whole purpose of the timber, timber guard rail is to stop people from parking on the wetlands.
Yep.
And you'll save, you'll reuse the material and you save the cost of the timber, uh, guard rail.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea.
A budding that, the driveway that steeped, that there's a concern the cars are gonna drive off and-
It's not, it's not about them driving off. The grade is pretty flat. The, we just don't want them driving off the roadway and into a wetland area, resource area. It's kinda to contain them on the roadway. Typically at recreational facilities, people end up parking along the sides of roadways and things like that.
But we have a parking facility there. I mean, there's an attic parking.
There, there could be an event, and I'm not saying there will be, and I'm not saying how park and rec will operate the facility, but there could be an event, a field day of some sort where the number of parked, people are looking for spaces and would try to get off the side of the road.
I'm just looking at it from a completely different perspective here. If it's not a safety concern,
Mm-hmm.
how many linear feet of, of, uh, timber guard rail is that? I mean, that's, that's all the way back, right?
It's, it's an erosion, it's a segmentation runoff into the wetlands concern.
Timber guard rail's like, to stop people from parking here and degrading the vegetation through here.
Yes.
Or parking half on and half in the road and blocking the fire access.
A rock wall would do the same thing. That's what I like your idea of.
I thought that was a good idea.
Yeah, even those rocks, put, you know, every twenty feet or-
Yeah, you wouldn't, wouldn't have to be very tall.
Yeah, those rocks aren't the type that every twenty feet are gonna get your attention. It's a, it's a classic rock wall, the rock, typical rock dimension, foot, foot and a half.
Oh, maybe every five feet.
Well, you just, just re, just restack them where they are.
Yeah, I think you'd restack the wall to the extent that you could based on what you removed.
Yeah, just use as much as you can.
And we can certainly do that.
As opposed to, I'm, I'm just wondering what the linear footage of that timber is.
Yeah.
Close to thirteen hundred feet, uh, probably more than that.
Yeah.
Fourteen hundred feet of timber.
It rises out at a hundred dollars a linear frame or something.
Is that how much it costs a hundred dollars for a linear?
Timber guard rail. A timber guard rail.
Yeah.
Well, they have a detail of it, right?
Fifty.
I'd say fi- every bit of fifty. Not a hundred though.
So you, that, that's about sixty-five hundred dollars, seven thousand dollars.
Seventy-five hundred dollars?
Well, you'll save some-
The stone would look nice there and save you a little money.
More of the park walk too.
Yeah, and, and more of the park look, um, where that four-foot pervious pavement sidewalk arrow is right now, sort of, yeah, that guy right there. Um, I'm thinking that when this thing is all built, you, you know, it's, it's, it's outdoors and yet the walk, you know, the road has this nice curve to it and, and I know why the walk is shaped the way it does.
Sure.
But do you think you could soften that?
Sure.
So it doesn't, so it's a little more-
Absolutely.
-comforting to walk and do, mm, 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 mm. Well, can we, do you guys have any color that you're thinking about for the concrete, for the skate park?
No.
So it would, if it goes in the way it now, it would end up being white?
Yes.
Okay, um, that's, you know, white is, uh, is glaring. It's probably the least amount, it's probably the least sympathetic to that environment that's out there as an aesthetic. Um, the glare is an issue environmentally, but, um, I don't know if you guys could consider color, integral coloring it, you know? It increases the cost, but, um, you could, uh, make it sit a lot better in that park-like setting out there.
Is, is there any idea to coat it?
To what?
Graffiti coating or anything like that?
Well, it, whether it's integral color or regular, it's, it's still gonna be-
I think that creates a problem. I think if we could, if we could color code a hunter green concrete on the southern natural ground. I think graffiti on, as far as the skateboarding is a problem, then you have to reapply it. No, on non-skiboard surfaces maybe, and we're investigating that right now for the pavilion we're putting in.
The-
Well, this is gonna be flat for a while, isn't it? I mean, before you start getting the equipment on it.
It's gonna be a, right, so I think maybe color coding, I've, I've color coded concrete, certain colors, but.
What, 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 what you, okay, so if you do decide that you wanna do that, um, that you don't wanna color coat it, you don't wanna do that kind, cause that just comes off with use on top of it.
So you put a dye in, in the concrete and you mix it.
And it's mixed at the plant.
Right.
Yep, and so they have every color you can imagine and so you can pick whatever color you want.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, so those are my minor issues and then for major issues, I just wanted to talk about the abutter issues. Uh, this one was really important to me and I have it under my major categories. I, I, I as one board member couldn't recommend enough that, that it's put in writing, um, that it's part of this. And it's not just a meeting, but that there is, um, the grading easement, there is the drainage issue that Larry was talking about. And I'm not sure, you may be already totally clear about this, but you're gonna be losing, I mean, all of that vegetation that's between you and the church right now.
Yeah, there's a six-foot fence that goes up, right?
That's, so you're losing trees that are thirty-six inch diameter, twenty-four inch diameter. It is an incredibly healthy stand of trees and vegetation.
Yeah, I mean, we had discussed what, why the sidewalk couldn't be on the other side and it was explained that there was a safety hazard in terms of the amount of retaining wall.
Yep.
Some of the children on there, so obviously if that's, you know, we'd love to be able to come up with a solution that keeps the trees and vegetation there. It's just seemed like that was an option, so that's came up.
So, um, the, you can, you can add plants back in. If you're gonna take plants out, you can add plants back in. And I, this is just my opinion, but what you're gonna end up with is you're gonna end up with a road. You're gonna end up with a sidewalk. You're gonna end up with a six-foot high, I hear the word privacy fence, which to me implies solid to a degree, whether it's lat, louvert or whatever. When I was saying black vinyl chain link, to me that's more open and I don't consider that a privacy fence. That's more of a barrier fence. But you're gonna see this, this opaque fence on your left. And all of that incredible vegetation is gonna, it's, it's, is gonna be gone and it is going to be an incredibly artificial entrance to what was once really quite handsome. So I would strongly encourage the board to require that, uh, you know, that they, some trees get planted back there. Um, to, to someday, we'll all be dead, but to someday for the future, you know, not, it's not an immediate short sighted view. It's a, it's the long-term view. Plant some trees back there and get them, get them in.
I mean, they, they do need to be small and juvenile enough, so they can, they're gonna be planted on a slope that they can adapt to that.
No, no, but just, it, a- as a planning department, we should be, you know, we should make sure at the very least that we are planting trees for the future, at the very least. Um, and I just, you know, so I, I think that's something that would, would make a lot of sense.
Gee, I fought the, I fought the tree issue with the Christmas tree in the center of town that they removed, so.
What?
I'm a little bit treated up.
Yeah, like a cut down one.
Like a cut down in the weekend.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe that's something that one more- Talk to the tree warden about it.
Yeah, but there was, that's, I've always been concerned with trees, like, you know, I put them in.
Yeah.
Um, and we'll continue to put them in, but I, I, I hear, and I think we'll do the same with this park. You know, and we're not gonna leave the park looking like a hazardous place then.
Well, just, that's great. It just needs to be shown in the plans. That's all. Um, so putting in writing, um, an agreement that you guys sign off on, a letter or something that, that will be a legal document that if, God forbid, you guys sell the property, that the next owner knows that these things were off, you know what I mean? So that the town doesn't have problems that come back to bite them in terms of these issues. It's about protecting the town in the long term.
Well, what are you asking us to sign off and approve?
To, to write a letter or to approve that you guys are aware, and I'm not a lawyer, but you guys are aware of the loss of all this vegetation and that's acceptable to your-
It's not on our property.
It's a buffering issue. Well, you don't have to respond to that then if you don't want to. You're aware of the drainage issue? You're aware that this board has advised-
Eleven percent less drainage issue than we have today?
You're aware that this board's technical review agent, and I concur, you're going to have in some situations more pavement, uh, more, more water in this heavy storms.
So I have conflicting, you're asking me to judge conflicting-
Yes, you do have conflicting information.
So you're suggesting we hold up a project because of conflicting information or?
I'm suggesting the town needs to be protected. I don't really care how you guys do it.
I, I would suggest that the town needs to be protected. It doesn't fit the plan.
We're trying to make it happen. We're trying to make the project, well, so then all you need to do is sign off on that stuff.
Well, why are you asking us to waive something? We've given property to the rec right here. We, uh, tried to provide a good citizen, uh, corporate citizenship to the town and you're asking us to waive any rights or-
Yeah, I don't, I, I disagree with you, Rob. I'm sorry.
You're gonna, you're gonna, so you're gonna, you're gonna put this issue of drainage, if they sell this property and this project was approved and there's drainage.
The people that buy it, the people that buy the property, when and if they sell it, it's not, they're buying it with the drainage conditions as they are when they buy it.
I'm-
He understands that during periods of extreme-
With, with all due respect, gentlemen, remember, this does fit DEP's one hundred year storm. This, this fits every regulation from DEP.
Time out. It does from the calculations in the report.
Right, and that's what we always go by, Rob. That's all anyone can legally go by.
No, we also have a technical review agent who is, who is, who is telling us, and I agree as a professional also that does this work.
Right.
I agree that in heavy rains, there's going to be more water, there's going to be more water going across.
Absolutely. During a five hundred year storm, there's gonna be more water. There's more water coming out of the sky.
Can I suggest, the reason I asked to confirm this as a special permit is because I think the board, as opposed to definitive subdivision plan or site plan approval or special permit, you can revisit this anytime you want. You can write into your special permit decision a revisitation of the drainage issue.
Whatever issue.
Hmm?
Whatever issue.
Yeah, whatever issue.
I can tell you-
But once it's approved, once it's approved, it, that's done.
No, I, I think that you-
I mean, no, I know you can revisit it, but once it's approved, the chances of changing that or getting that addressed are, are nil. What's the motivation to then get something on record in writing from the abutter?
What's, he's, he's been offered that opportunity and he's saying he doesn't-
You can have it or not have it, but you can revisit this.
You're saying so that you don't-
If there is an issue brought up by the abutter.
You don't, you don't feel the need to sign some sort of documentation or?
Doesn't that, and doesn't that tell you something that he doesn't wanna write anything? Doesn't that tell you something, Tim?
I, I think they are writing easements. They've given land.
Yep.
So that this could proceed fully well knowing. If they didn't give that land, they probably could have blocked this progress like that.
Yep. Yep. So if all of that is true, then what is, why can't they then just put it in writing? If all that's true, why can't it just go in writing?
Let me explain. So for us, we're a public company and I'm hearing two different views. The planning board has jurisdiction over that. For us to waive that would mean to do our due diligence, we've got a higher own engineering firm to do our own study, to advise our board to basically make a decision like that. So what you're asking us to do is, it seems unreasonable. Uh, because we have to basically do our own independent analysis on something that we're, we're simply, uh, looking for a judgment here. So I'm sitting back. If you can't decide, then why would I wanna waive?
But I don't think it's a matter of a waiver. I, I just think that, that what, what Rob is doing is he's just requesting that you recognize what the board is, has, has, has found and decided upon. That, you, you have no jurisdiction to waive anything, right? But as an abutter, and if I could just quickly summarize what the, um, uh, your, your name, uh, the organization, United Fund, we recognize in our efforts to help the town facilitate, uh, the, the review of this, we understand these implications.
What implications are those?
The implications that just repeat, just repeat exactly what was just said. The implications are that the applicant is telling us this about the drainage.
What, precisely. This is the problem with being much too vague here. You're talking about a legal document that you're asking a corporate officer to sign will be reviewed by, by lawyers.
I'm not going to- I'm not going to draft it here off, off the top of my head, Harry, so.
I think that's the problem. I don't think it can be drafted because-
I think the area-
I think the area, what Larry would be saying is, DEP standards don't apply here.
Let me try to finish.
And I don't know if Larry's gonna do that.
Let me try to finish. I think then it's, it's a letter that says, we understand that we've been advised that the, um, drainage, uh, according to the applicant is saying no change, uh, yet the technical review agent is saying that there very well could be a change. We understand that and we don't have any problem with that.
And there's also the.
Well, I think we need, what, I think we need a document for them to refer to.
Yeah.
Coming from Larry with his stamp on it, saying that the DEP standards, the one hundred year storm event standards, that we do approve every other subdivision in this town under. Every subdivision goes by those hundred year storm event, the Concom uses those. If Larry's gonna go out there, if he's gonna go there, then that can be something that I, I think you probably wouldn't have a problem signing that.
Anything that you said, I would recommend that if there's a language that you'd like us to review, we're happy to do that. And I'll leave it at that.
And I think it goes beyond the stormwater too, it goes to the, the idea of the sidewalk that still is out in the open.
Well, that was, I was coming to that.
Is sidewalk gonna be placed on your property, is it gonna be the right of way, is it gonna be half on, half off, so.
And there, you know.
But I'm sorry, can I timeout there? I mean, cause it's getting very late and are we putting a sidewalk on someone else's property?
We are not proposing a sidewalk.
My understanding was there, there might need to be some temporary grading easements.
Yep.
Which, my, my understanding was you'd be willing to grant those.
Yeah, that's our understanding.
Yeah, temporary grading.
And that would be something, and that would be something in writing.
Well, it has to be, it's an easement.
Well, I'm just saying, well, get it from them, you know, that that would be part of this other. As long, as long as that's in writing, Harry, that's all, that's all I'm looking for. If it, if it ends up in the easement there, a temporary grading easement, then it's fine, it's covered there. As far as the sidewalk is concerned, that's another discussion. Um, but I think to try to wrap that up, I think we should draft a letter and have them review that to, uh, to try to resolve this.
Okay, let's put that to a vote. Anybody wanna make a motion for that?
Make a motion to, I'll make a motion to draft a letter to have Larry Graham draft a letter, a letter of understanding.
You can't make a motion, Rob.
Oh.
You're, you're making a recommendation.
So it's just a letter of understanding of what's, what's being discussed.
I don't wanna suggest that, I don't wanna ask him to do anything he's uncomfortable doing. He, he's unders, he's person discussion on the drainage. And.
Well.
You, you understand that under rare or heavy thunderstorm events, you're gonna get more water.
If someone else from his office, from his company, a worker wants to sue because they happen to have a problem with one of these deluges, him sitting there saying this and agreeing isn't gonna mean a hill of beans to us, to the town, to protect the town. It's not gonna mean a hill of beans.
All we have to rely back on are DEP stormwater calculations.
Alone, Harry, no, that's not true. You've got that to start with, but then you get a document that's in writing. That's what you, that's the best thing, that's the only thing in the end that matters.
Anybody wanna make a motion for that? One once, one twice. Okay, any other things?
You guys just put the town on the hook for a possible dangerous situation in the future.
I, the thing is, we can't quantify what that risk is. You said that this is a, uh.
I don't know what the risk is either.
But the thing is, there's risk in everything, in absolutely everything. I don't know that this risk is quantifiable enough to move forward to make.
If, if increased, if increased.
Let's move on.
If increased drainage is not enough.
Let's, let's move on. We have DEP regs to cover it.
Um, very disappointed in the board. Um, reference to agreement that I'm drawing, it's conflict with note twenty-seven. On the, um, how does, I'm just curious, how does the, no, screw it, I don't even wanna go there anymore. Um, we've talked about the planting. Where you have two to one slopes, what are you guys planting there?
What is gonna be loam seeds, grass.
How are you gonna maintain that?
Question, it's not a lot of area, you know, ideally it would be either allowed to be weed whacked or, or maintained in another manner, but.
Who's gonna do the maintenance?
The parks.
Is that another thing you guys wanna take on?
Yeah.
Why when you don't have to?
Cause Peter maintains the parks, we, we have an agreement.
Why do you guys create work for yourselves?
Cause we've been doing this for four years.
But why do you create work for yourselves when you could solve the same problem by putting something in there instead of grass?
Over time, different areas will be judged to their, to their needs of grass or trees and they, they get done.
But then you pay twice. Instead of paying once now, the town pays twice.
Rob, what else would you put in?
I would put in some sort of native, uh, plant that takes over and forget it, you're done. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put grass, it's the last thing I'd put.
Put pack of sand right there.
No, I wouldn't put a ground cover like that, that's a high maintenance thing to get it going. I would pick some native plant material that, um, grows in, in a, in a hillside condition, I don't know if it's got sun or not, and I'd let it go.
And, and that's, that's great and maybe to keep the cost down initially, maybe loam and seed.
But this is a classic.
As, as the town gets money, as.
Harry, this is, this is a classic, short sighted approach to how the town does projects in a nutshell. Save money today so that we can spend twice as much money later to fix it. And that's the result of that decision-making process. Anyways.
Ground cover is very nice.
Anyways, I've, I've beaten that one up.
Anybody wanna make a motion for ground cover?
I think that's a good explanation. I would, I would move that we recommend that you use a ground cover, uh, native plants. I don't know what, what, what ground cover would you use, I don't get it.
On a two to one slope, and a, and a basic called Pacasandra.
I, I would say just find some native, just find some native deciduous shrubs that can grow on the hillside for the sake of that time. All right, that was it for me.
Tim?
No, the, the only thing I have is that the, to, to circle full back was the discussion about a sidewalk and that the.
There was never a decision reached.
When you say this decision about the sidewalk, refresh my memory, I'm sorry.
If, if, there was the idea of connecting the sidewalk here.
There isn't any sidewalk here, there's the curb cut, then there's a sidewalk that starts here.
Right, so essentially what we're looking at there is.
Is there?
A parcel of land right now, which is the, the locus of our park and rec, under the direction of the Park and Rec Commission, under the management and control of the Park and Rec Commission. And now we're stepping outside of that to the county commissioner's right of way.
Do you have Google Maps on?
Am I right? We're talking about, uh, state numbered.
It is a state right of way, the state lay.
Uh-huh.
Well, well, some, someone has to put a sidewalk in there.
And perhaps in two years, if, um, the state agreed, they might do something like that.
So in the meantime, you're gonna have a sidewalk open up into the mouth of a driveway that holds a parking lot of ninety cars. You're gonna, you're gonna, as a planning board, you're gonna approve that for health, safety and welfare issues.
I think you have to block the end of the sidewalk.
Zoom into that area on the satellite.
All you have to do is extend the bituminous around with a curb that'll align perfectly with the existing planting bed that's there as far, as, as part of the budding property. Sidewalk isn't easy.
Maybe what we need is a good detail of that so that we can see it, because maybe, maybe I'm not, um.
There is a sidewalk lined in that area now.
There's the road that goes down.
See, see the planting bed with those trees in it?
Yeah.
So that has a curb in front of it, so it's raised already six inches. Now, the sidewalk is painted flush to the road. So all you do is where that white line is, is you put a curb in there and you raise what's flush to be matched with the level of the curbing that's holding the planter in. Pressed on, you've got a, you've got a sidewalk.
Is there a jurisdictional issue though?
There is.
It, it, it's state owned land, but.
So you need to get permission from the state to do that.
You might have to, I don't know.
Are you having that happen?
So, but, but you don't wanna put a, you don't wanna put something in place without that addressed. You don't, I, I could never do, I could never.
Have to talk to Larry.
Yeah, we could talk to D O, D O, D O T.
I wanna be clear, this is.
By hearing a motion?
Guys, this is health, safety and welfare.
Yeah.
Going away.
I don't know what to, what, what the motion is.
I don't either.
I would. I, I could just contact the highway depart, highway surveyor and, and see if he has any knowledge of, of what type of permitting effort or requirements would be to have this type of sidewalk in, and I can report back to the board to see if it's feasible or not. And just to make him aware of the desire for the connection, but it's up to the board in, in their decision to, to see how they're gonna consider this type of connection.
It is pretty dangerous to just have a sidewalk that end on a Route one thirty-three.
Well, it says it's connecting there, can you zoom in on that, Howard? Cause we don't have a detail, but maybe we can zoom a little.
I just bring it up because it seems to me that it's an unresolved issue that, that's been discussed.
Right, right there, right there in that corner there, sorry, I'm a little late.
That, that.
Right, right there where it says match proposed sidewalk to existing bituminous concrete walkway.
That walkway though is not.
Is that what you're saying?
There is, the walkway is striped on the ground, there is no curbing separation, Harry. So in effect, what happens visually is that that sidewalk concludes at what is perceived to be the mouth of the driveway coming in. So.
So this matches the, the proposed sidewalk. This is asphalt, this is the entrance, and this part meets the two minutes right here, that, that goes up this way.
No, that.
But it's the same grade as the road.
Right, right. And is there a curb here?
There is a curb on the other side and there is, and there is a sidewalk on the other side. There it is right there.
Oh, it's up there.
Yep. And that would be the exact same condition you would be creating here.
Well, I think it's a good idea, I mean, can it be done though?
Sure, of course it can be done. I, I feel bad that it's coming up at this late stage, but I'm just getting it before now and it should have been brought up a long time ago.
It was brought up originally, I think it's a two to three year project.
Oh, really?
To get state approval.
So why did you guys just blow it off?
Because I, I brought it up with the, I brought it up with the highway department, it's something we would like to do in the future. Just look into it. And he's, he's, it's a state owned road, so he will try to incorporate it in the future, but.
And I understand, I understand that.
Complete sidewalks plan.
But you, you, so in the meantime, what happens, what happens to this sidewalk that you've created, this new sidewalk with kids and whatnot?
From a, from a standpoint, do you remember Acorn Way? You were on the board when that subdivision was put in up off of Tenny Street. And you, I think it was you that brought up the issue of the safety of having a sidewalk from a subdivision just ending on a, on another road. So we stopped the sidewalk like twelve feet beneath the road.
Yeah, we're doing that on, on Leesland Lane and at Cyril Street, same thing.
Yeah, I mean, as a short term measure, they can apply to the state and when they get approval from the state.
Peter will apply to the state, I mean, he knows there's a.
In the meantime, just stop it short.
I, I don't think that's a great idea, cause where are people gonna go, out in the road, where it's more complicated.
No, but you, you keep, you keep people coming out of there on bicycles from like, just driving and riding out onto the highway.
Well, they shouldn't be on the sidewalk.
Well, they will.
Well, they shouldn't be on the sidewalk.
They will.
How much of a nanny do we get to be?
No.
How much do we worry about it? How much do we worry about it?
Super nannies.
Can't do that.
Well, Larry, what do you think? You think it's needed?
I think it's needed and I don't think it's that hard to get approval for. We have sidewalks within the right of way all over the place. And that, you know, that, that curb right there just moved out to this line. You put a radius right around there and, and bring the sidewalk down and end it right here, put some striping across the entrance.
Bada boom bada bang.
How far is it?
Hundred feet, two hundred feet?
No, that's eighty-seven feet on, eighty-seven feet from here to here, so it's under a hundred feet. Talking about a hundred feet of sidewalk and curb.
Well, that was, that was the only comment I had and I can have some answers through the board at the next meeting.
That would be helpful, Howard. And maybe a little bit of information about, uh, complete streets policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, all part of it. Anything else? The many abutters in the, in the audience.
Just, just one clarification, cause I've heard a reference to a document, I think it indicated, says the, the fencing is a galvanized black fence. Is that a privacy fence in the document?
Please clarify.
It's a six-foot chain link fence that has privacy screening along your barrier. So it does have the privacy screening, yeah.
It's not galvanized, is it?
No, it's a vinyl coated chain.
That's fine, it's a privacy fence, I, I thought there was a reference to, cause I've seen the black fences that basically blend in. What we were looking for is a privacy screen.
It's both, it, it's the black fence that, that certainly is gonna weather and look better than a Galvee, but it's, it's got some screening as well.
That's fine, as long as it's a privacy.
We have a detail in there, don't we?
It's gonna be a handsome.
Have you seen the details, sir?
We've actually, we've exchanged some.
You've seen the drawing?
So.
Okay, and photos?
Yep, we can do photos back and forth.
Can I just say thank you for all you've done? I've been following this for, uh, many years and the, the donation of the land and the easements, um, your understanding?
No, we're happy, we're happy to do it and, and I recognize and I appreciate the discussion this evening, so, uh, on all parks. It just makes for a better town decision for everybody.
I agree.
Given that, uh, this is a special permit and we need four affirmative votes from the four board members that can vote, Tim. Well, myself and Tilly. I think the best thing we can do at this point is to, uh, continue, thank you.
Has Tilly missed any meetings?
My knowledge, no, the only one that has missed is, I believe you've missed one of these, is that, is that correct? Because if, if Tilly's missed one prior to this, then you guys can just withdraw, cause you can't get a special permit.
I, I have, um, missed a single hearing session from, uh, Harry and Chris and that is it.
Chris doesn't get to vote anymore.
Yeah, so.
So at this point, even.
Tilly will need to sign a Mullins, but she'll be able to vote at the next meeting.
For tonight's miss, and then we should be good to go.
Are there any, so are there changes that are gonna be made to the drawings that are gonna get resubmitted?
We have changes regarding the bumping out the parking lot space.
Yeah.
A note regarding removing the A and B layer beneath the, um, pervious pavement sidewalks. Adding a vehicle gate at the top of the hill where we talked about just prior to that stone trench. Adding a site triangle to the drawing so that we show that you have clear sight of vision around the shrubs. We're gonna soften the walk around the baseball field so that it has better appearance. Shrub plantings along U F P and, um, we had some recommendations regarding ground cover in that same area with the two to one slope.
You missed two.
What did I miss?
We're gonna consider use some material other than steel for the handicap signage posts.
Yep.
We're gonna consider how to reuse the stone removed from the stone walls on this site.
In place of perhaps some.
Tinder card rail.
Yep.
I think the other thing that we were asked to consider was alternative colors of the concrete.
Yeah.
Hot pick.
Mouth.
Don't go.
Mouth.
Don't be dead.
But anyway, um, look, um, I'll hear a, um, okay, well.
Just to work day.
Do we wanna go in the same night that we're doing turning leaf? Or do we wanna push it out one week, one meeting from that?
Six twenty-five. It might be wise to, to push it out a week in order to see if we can get.
One meeting?
One meeting, in, in order to, uh, maybe take some time to see if we can find out what the situation regarding a sidewalk would be.
Yeah, maybe get some sort of feedback from Peter or.
From the state or.
Well, Larry said it's easy, maybe Larry can do it.
Yeah, bring us a permit, Larry.
He's getting feisty.
Bring, bring us a permit.
District four is, is a permits engineer. Peter or yourself wanna?
Yep, we'll get in touch with that.
Ask, call back to town, probably call back to town person before he'll call me, cause he'll never answer his phone.
cause he'll never answer his phone.
And just, just to note, um, your Form H expires June thirtieth, and, uh, so we'll need another extension of time at the next meeting, because we still need to go through the decision and everything else, so.
Good catch.
Who'll be creating bid documents?
We shall.
We will.
What's your estimate at this point?
Cost? I don't have that off the top of my head with me.
If you could.
I can bring that next time.
Maybe send that to Howard.
Certainly.
C C dealing.
Why is that?
I'm just curious to see how much it's ballooned. Uh, I'll accept the motion to continue to, what was the date, Howard, I'm sorry, what was that?
June twenty-fifth.
June twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen?
So moved.
So moved. Motion made by Tim Howard, seconded by Bob Watts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-fifth.
Opposed? All abstaining?
No, I said aye.
Aye, uh, unanimous, motion carries unanimously. Um, my understanding is the only other thing that we have not, thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you, and, um, you have a good mentor there.
Yeah, I do.
Um.
That was the right answer, too.
Right? That's what I thought.
Well, you have to say that, cause the camera's on.
Ask me later when he's not around.
Yeah, he made a face, he made a face, you could, you watch the tape, you'll see it.
Even the old guy did a good job.
Thank you, sir, from United Phone.
Yes, yes, thanks.
Can't thank you enough, really can't.
Can you pass down the?
Oh, you want your laser pointers back?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Aw, man.
Wow, he's collected his laser pointer, look, he has them numbered. Um, the only remaining thing with it, old business, one sixty-one West Main Street. I did not see the gentleman, uh, what's his name, Mr. Trump? Mrs. I didn't see him, he never showed up, so we will continue that.
That's not good.
Yeah, I've told him it's not good, too.
Why don't we continue that?
To the next one.
Uh, to the next one.
All right, yeah.
Just because it's.